Reminder for myself.
Really?
You're loaded?
You're now loaded.
I've been a reward.
We're now on?
Yeah, you're now.
This is great. Readers.
Your nails made your lipstick, okay? I feel like a female.
We are now recording, but we're not saving any of the session. We've got just two seconds.
Is there a news?
Is there?
It's over now, but see.
It's gonna be that day.
Huh?
Yeah. You ready to get to it? It's time for that. You got a list or where you got your bunch? And that's a briefing?
Good evening, everyone. The time is exactly six o'clock and today is December the sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Welcome. We are convening our briefing work session, our work session briefing session. And or however you wish to identify the time of the day. Thank you very much for being here. And with that, we will go into having our. Ah, let's see, consent items.
Yes.
City manager, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On our consent agenda today, we have a few items. Uh, first item is item four A is consider approval of draft city council meeting minutes for the following city council meetings. Regular city council meeting September twentieth, special call city council meeting September twenty-sixth, regular city council meeting of October eighteenth, and our retreat for meeting on October twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. Item four B, consider resolution approving a cooperative purchasing agreement with Vortex Company, Vortex Infrastructure Holding, LCC, using interlocal purchasing system TIPS contract two oh one one oh four oh one for pipe bursting water wastewater improvements with a contract amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents, and an additional appropriation of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents, a contingency equaling ten percent of the original contract price for a total amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-three thousand, ninety dollars and ninety-five cents. The item provides for the pipe bursting to approximately three thousand, seven hundred and eighty feet of sanitary sewer, main along Johnson Street, Flamingo Way, East Cherry Street, and Berry Streets in Forest Hill addition. The project will repair structural and capacity deficiencies of this current sewer and prevent rainwater and our groundwater inflow and infiltration. Additionally, pipe bursting will reduce sanitary sewer overflow, sewage treatment costs, and future sewer system maintenance calls. Vortex Company is headquartered in Houston, Texas. They have successfully performed pipe bursting services for the city during the past three fiscal years. Item four C, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of a master interlocal agreement between Dallas County and the city of Duncanville pertaining to road and bridge construction relating to improvement and our maintenance on or about certain designated roadways situated within the territorial limits of the city of Duncanville. This item approves the terms and conditions of the master interlocal agreement, Dallas County for road and bridge transportation relating to improvement and our maintenance. The agreement outlines Duncanville's responsibilities and expectations when Dallas County performs work and road maintenance activities and extends through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Project-specific contracts will be required for each maintenance project under the master interlocal agreement. Item four D, consider resolution authorizing the purchase of library material books as needed from Broad Dart Company through the Texas Multi-Award Schedule TXMAS Contract Number seven one five dash M two with an estimated expenditure of expenditure of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. There we go. The library has been purchasing books, uh, from this company for over nineteen years. Various cooperative contracts have been utilized in the recent years primarily via the Texas Controller's Office. The contract is effective October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three and offers discounts for books list price. Staff estimates contract expenditures over the next twelve months to be sixty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. In FY twenty-two, the city spent sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, uh, utilizing the same contract.
Just want to comment, I'd like to make from the city manager instead, looking at the identification of each individual items. It brought to mind that we, I personally don't really understand the depth of intelligence and brilliance and expertise required to manage that. Uh, because of the, you know, if you looked at that, those attachments that we had, each individual filings, the categories of all those materials, that is a lot of work. To be able to identify those and to bring those into our community for the education of our citizens, I think is a wonderful thing. Just wanted to make mention of that.
Thank you. Item four E, consider resolution authorizing the purchase of uniforms and uniform accessories from Impact Promotional Services, LCC, DVA. Got your covered work, workwear and uniform ink through Byboard Contract Number six seventy dash twenty-two for a discounted unit price bid with an estimated expenditure amount of eighty-one thousand eight hundred. Police and Fire both purchased necessary uniforms for first responders through Impact Promotional Services. Uh, Got You Covered provides uniform pricing through Byboard Contract Number six oh seven twenty-two. Although the Byboard contract ends on five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three, the contract does have a two, have two one-year renewal available. Police uniform estimate the cost at about fifty thousand dollars, Fire estimates their cost at thirty-one thousand, eight hundred.
This for uniforms, not protective gear?
Yes, that's what it states. And it may be protective gear, and I will ask Police and Fire, is it beyond just uniforms, just uniforms?
So our vests come from somewhere else?
Says we, uniform accessories, so what is that?
Leather gear, um, uniforms that we would wear, um, for uniform personnel, but all our, our belt and leather gear we have on.
Eyes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Consider resolution authorizing the procurement of wireless and data services from Selco Partnership via Verizon Wireless through Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Contract, DIR T L E dash C T A S A dash zero zero three in an estimated amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand over the next five years. The city has used a variety of hardware and software-related services for wireless voice and data. This includes cell phones, data plans for use out in the field and departments. And one of the purposes of this is the consolidation of many contracts that have been separated. And we find that from a purchasing standpoint, this allows us a better use. Uh, and so these are all individual contracts that are commercialized. The wireless voice and data services are available from Selco Partnership, uh, doing business with Verizon Wireless through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Agreement with this contract expiration date of November, two thousand twenty-nine. The contract covers the equipment and services with a variety of prices and amount covers, the estimated expenditures for over the next five years, which the estimated expenditures for this year is ninety-four thousand. And so, uh, what we've been looking at is we were individually purchasing items from different vendors or the same vendors. And so the state has a pre-arranged contract that allows us to consolidate and do a better tracking of what are our expenditures under the Verizon contract.
So what, with that estimated dollar amount well over a quarter of a billion dollars we're pushing half, was consideration given to any other carrier besides Verizon?
I will ask my IT director.
And the answer is yes, but the telco, telcos aren't the same. So the price that we getting, that we're getting their flat fees. So for some things, it's a flat thirty-three dollars and fifty cents, data plans. We have routers that we call cradle points where you see things working. We have a number of different things that are going on, but the plan is solid across. We look at the presence of the telco in the area. So Verizon is heavily into our area, so their signal is a lot stronger. We actually met with them today to look at their maps to see where they're, um, enforced in improving their infrastructure. So that's who we have right now. And they not only provide that, but, um, we have GPS on our vehicles. So it's a lot of things that we get through them, but the prices are comparable. There's no significant difference.
So there'd be no advantage to changing from Verizon to say AT&T or Frontier?
We currently use AT&T as, as, at some sites as the backup.
Oh, okay.
So if we look at our public utilities, water, Verizon is the main telco on there, and then the AT&T is bill over. So we.
This is a really minor point, and if it's so minor, tell me to shut up. But looking at city, the line item for city council was three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. I was thinking, the only time I use Verizon is when I'm actually in this building, on this device right here. So for our city council members, that's what the dollar value is of our accessing Verizon. Uh, those infrequent times that we're here in this building using these devices is three thousand. Of course, that's five years too, if, or is that just a single year?
It's.
The data point is continuously.
Yeah, so.
Your data plan works even if you're not using it, you still have the data if you're at home and you look on your iPad. It's like having a cellphone at home when you have.
If you don't do the math, it's thirty-seven ninety-nine per iPad. So times seven people, times twelve months, so.
It, oh, okay. Because when I go home, this thing logs into my carrier. So I need to change it to keep logging in Verizon when I go home.
Yes.
Get my money's worth.
It's your preference, yes.
Ah, okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Have a go away now. All right, thank you, appreciate that.
That concludes the consent items.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Curtis?
Before we go on to, uh, briefings, I'd like to request we move the executive session items to the end.
That's. Just. Yeah, I was gonna watch the time and pretty well thought that as things go and the importance of those, that those are more than likely gonna go to the end of our meeting. Yeah, quite so, yeah.
Thank you.
So would we, is it item A for individual consideration? Can we move the also two consent?
Uh, just, if there, item five A. If there's consensus to moving item five A to consent, I would be agreeable with that.
I'd like to.
We can't take a vote on that in here, but if there's a consent, we can certainly do that as well.
Yes.
I'd be agreeable on getting.
I'd be agreeable.
I'm getting a majority of, uh, okay's. All right, so.
Can you cover it now?
Uh, cover it now, because we're moving, I, just for the record, we are recording item five A. Item brings into consideration, uh, by consensus, it has been recommended and okayed by council here that we are moving five A from consideration to consent. Uh, so with that, let's see, it's, um, Gus Garcia. You arrived just in time.
Thank you.
Did you know what we were doing?
Okay, I do.
Uh, item five A is the, uh, the hot fund grant for the Chamber of Commerce. Has been recommended and approved that we move it to, I'm sorry, to consent. So let's cover that now and take care of it if you would please.
Sure, absolutely. So as you know, uh, the chamber requests funds every year, uh, from the hot tax fund for the operations of the facility. The chamber serves as the city's, uh, visitor center as part of the hot tax. Uh, so requirements from the state, uh, the visitor center, it does qualify as an expenditure, qualified expenditure that we can't use the money for. The visitor center had some maintenance repairs, some landscape upgrades. They had some plumbing issues, uh, with the restroom. They also had some computer upgrades, and the sprinkler system had gone down. And it is, it does serve as our visitor center, and there's some signage that they want to also improve. As you're probably aware, the council back in August approved nineteen thousand, two hundred for the normal operations of the visitor center. And so they are making a new request for fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. These are eligible, uh, as you can see from section three five one, one oh one, use of, uh, tax revenue. Revenue for the municipal hotel tax may be used only to promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry, and that use is limited to one of the following. There's several items, this is the one that qualifies under, for the acquisition of sites, for the construction improvement, large equipment repairing, operating, and maintenance of conventions, center, facilities, or visitor information centers, or both. So it does qualify under that particular statute. And I'm here to answer any questions if you're ready.
I will, uh, just interject a quick comment that this is a normal standard operating procedure for the chamber to come forward and SOP for us as well to approve these kinds of funds. And recognizing as well that the chamber building itself is the one and only single source for the, of the visitor center for the city of Duncanville. So these requests are, are very accommodating and routine, ordinary, but it does have to be documented as it goes forward for a grant. Thank you. Any further questions? If not, we're done with that.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, then we'll move on to our briefing and presentation, item number two, discuss streetlight policy best practices. Interim, uh, Public Works Director, Jackie Colton. Jackie.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of the Duncanville City Council. I'm Jackie Colton, the interim director of Public Works, and I am here tonight to talk about street policy best practices. So the city has a streetlight policy. It was last updated fourteen years ago. Uh, Councilman Coons fielded some requests from citizens in July asking for additional, uh, mid-block streetlights. Uh, we briefed the council October eighteenth on our current streetlight policy, and we were asked at that time to bring back best practices. Uh, in the interim, we received questions from Councilman Coons. So the purpose of our briefing today is to discuss best management practices for street light policies as well as answer the council members' questions. Okay, so we received six questions from the councilman, one related to residential request. Our current policy does not include a process for receiving requests for mid-block streetlights from residents. Okay, the second request related to mid-block spacing revisions. Currently, our policy states that for streets less than a thousand feet, you, uh, it wouldn't warrant a mid-block, um, streetlight. So the councilman asked that we review that and look at best management practices. Our current policy does not include a section on definitions. That was also requested. The fourth revision relates to purpose. The current purpose of our policy is to provide for the protection or the security of the motoring public, so the, uh, vehicles. So we were asked to look at revisions to provide for pedestrian safety. And then there were, um, requests to address streetscape lighting as well as dark skylighting. And we will get into each of these items here. Okay, so we looked at, uh, more, actually more than seven cities. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we reviewed the policy of our best southwest cities. So that's DeSoto, Cedar Hill, and Lancaster, in addition to Duncanville. It was recommended that we look at Lewiston, Maine, as well as Plano and Missouri City, and we threw in Mansfield for grants. Okay, so, city surveyed. And this relates to, uh, residence request. So the only city that has a formal request for mid-block lights is Plano. They have a petition request similar to what we do for roadhogs. The others mentioned, you know, receiving citizen requests in their, uh, guidelines or policies, and also provide for the request to be reviewed by the Public Works Department and approved by the Public Works Director. That is true of most of all of them.
Go back one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Plano, second from the bottom, homeowners are required to pay two-thirds the cost of the new streetlight.
Yes, sir.
I'll be up in the head, what are we looking at?
Uh, what is our recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're budgeted, a- and that's actually the input that I would like to get from the council. So basically, where cities, uh, provide for additional mid-block lights, meaning additional like outside of the limits of the guidelines, there is some cost participation, uh, you know, on the part of the requester.
What's our cost participat- participation in terms of roadhogs?
Uh, actually, they have to pay the full cost of the roadhog.
Oh.
Yes.
Ninety percent of those individuals on that particular street must sign a petition and agree to that. It's a ninety percent participation. In terms of approval on the petition, it's a hundred percent participation and cost for roadhogs.
Yeah.
Do I, did I recall that correctly?
Yes, sir, you're correct.
Okay. So I'm just thinking to myself, uh, Plano's a big city, it's got over two hundred thousand people now, longstanding excellence in municipal services and that sort of thing, so, um, I would think in our case, at least eighty percent.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, so, so we got anywhere from a hundred to two-thirds to, one of them said that they didn't address, you know, uh, the cost participation of the residents. Yes, sir.
Just along those lines, since, uh, talk about the roadhog policy, what about the bag wall policy? Do we budget, uh, for that, and, uh, what's the cost participation in that?
Okay, so the bag wall policy is currently unfunded this year, but it's a fifty-fifty. But actually, I think we budget anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a year when we did, you know, have funding in the budget. But the walls are, are generally so expensive until, you know, there are very few takers. Okay, so mid-block spacing currently, uh, unless a block is a thousand feet or greater, the policy wouldn't call for a mid-block light. So it's a given, you know, at intersections that there would be, uh, you know, lighting, a street light. But if it's less than a thousand feet, unless there was a situation with a short turn or something else like that that would, um, call for additional light for the safety of the motoring public, it wouldn't qualify. So, uh, of the cities that were surveyed, I mean, they're all over the place with their minimums. You've got anywhere from, you know, a hundred and eighty feet minimum to the five hundred.
Is, is there any, could you think of any reason that might account for the disparity?
No, if it was more uniform, you know, yeah, if there was more rhyme or, or reason to it.
Could be the topography of the communities?
Yes.
Or the number of houses in the community, the amount of development in the community?
That's, that's true. And then it could be the, it could, you know, break, break out to the budget, you know, how much funding, you know, is available, because this all boils down to, to funding as well, so.
One of the other things that could be tangential, so this is the ecological aspect of the city. Um, I know that we've received comments about my city, my street is so dark, and then other people come back and say, don't make it lighter because we have owls and we have other nocturnal creatures that prefer in the dark. So it's, it's, it's two sides, so some of these cities could have an ecological impact. To say that the, the night, the nocturnal animals and wildlife and so forth prefer darker so that they don't have, or they have bigger spacing, who knows?
Well, that's true too, and then.
In terms of historical, how they set those parameters would be historical.
Then we'll touch on that a bit because one of the suggestions related to dark skylighting. And so, you know, we'll touch on that. And so, you know, we'll touch on that. Okay, so we were also asked to include definitions, you know, in our, in, in any revisions to the policy. And when we looked at our survey cities, um, most of them do not, and Lewiston, Maine does. But it just all depends upon the contents of the policy, uh, whether or not we include definitions. But, you know, anything in the policy needs to be, you know, understood. So depending upon what changes are requested, we'll add definitions as we need to. Okay, so the purpose of the city's policy is, as stated, you know, the benefit of the motoring public, not security lighting in the neighborhood for pedestrians. And of the cities we surveyed, Lewiston, Maine had, uh, that, you know, security of pedestrians, reducing light pollution, uh, promoting energy conservation as purposes. So, but that is something that we definitely would need to entertain and receive feedback from the council regarding, you know, if we want to make any revisions to the purpose of our policy. It was also requested that streetscape lighting provisions be added to the policy. So most of the cities surveyed do have some form of streetscape lighting, uh, either in their comprehensive plan or their development guidelines, uh, or their streetscape master plan. And so this is something that we should seriously consider when we amend our, uh, comp, uh, comp plan and our zoning ordinance, not zoning ordinance, but subdivision ordinance and some of the other things. I know that, uh, planning, uh, will be, uh, shared with you all.
Question, wouldn't there be a relationship between the thoroughfare plan and the streetscape master plan?
There could be, yes, sir. But yeah, so, but streetscape, uh, lighting is more than just the road surface itself. You know, it's, uh, the, the sidewalks, the, uh, uh, you know, it's more of an aesthetic to provide character, you know, to the neighborhoods, so. Okay, so this is the dark skylighting, uh, that, uh, the purpose of it is to reduce like light pollution and target lighting to where it is needed. And so this was also requested. And actually, within our current zoning ordinance, there are provisions for dark skylighting as it relates to new development, redevelopments, and expansions. But it is something, you know, this is, you know, one of the, the things that is coming, you know, our way.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any, I've heard more and more about this than I probably, less than a year ago, I knew nothing about this. But it all makes good sense. Um, is this something that Encore's plugged into as well?
That's the other part of the equation. Cause if we decided to do something like this, then yeah, we would have to gear up with Encore in order to, if, you know, effect these changes.
Once this started, um, in the previous administration on a federal level. And so they incentivize communities, actually states, to develop a climate action plan. And from those climate action plans, they addressed areas to include the pollution from the lights as well as other types of pollution. And so each state, uh, across the United States would come through and adapt this climate action plan. Some cities went back and they also adapted a climate action plan. And within that plan, it focused on some of these areas. The state of Texas has done a little bit, but as a city, we haven't started doing that. I know, uh, some of the cities I've looked at have the plans and they focus on the type of fuels and what type of fuel efficiency programs we go. And it's really a community-based activity where the community gets together and they put together committees. And the committees look at what are the long-term 10-year plan of how do we start to do this? Uh, dark skylighting is very popular in hilly areas. For example, uh, if you look in, uh, New Mexico and even in the hills of California, a lot of folks are focusing on it because they're starting to talk about not only the pollution to the sky, but as we've heard here, there are some citizens who feel that there is the impact of the light that it's having on them.
And then also, you know, uh, it helps when you have the full cutoff and cutoff lighting. It helps, you know, to see the, the stars, you know, that, uh, aesthetics as well.
Just, I grew up with this. Uh, I'm from Southern Arizona. And Tucson, the University of Arizona is one of the specialized universities in the world for astronomy. And so I grew up in a city where lighting has been diffused downward for sixty, seventy years. So that's something I grew up with, so, you know, looking at dark skies, what we can do. Here it's more for the nocturnal, you know, wildlife in terms of, in looking at the skylight. Cause astronomy, you can't see anything more than Mars and Jupiter around here in, in the moon at night. Uh, but this is something I was well aware of, uh, Mr. Harverson, growing up, so.
Not only, not only to mention that, but also, you know, the city of Flagstaff and the Zonal Weather Hub and Observatory is located as a longstanding citywide policy of dark skies. It does not allow certain kinds of colors to be interfered with.
Right outside of Tucson is the Kip Peak Observatory, Kip Peak National Observatory. So it's, 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 it's a matter of where it evolves into versus has it been around a long time? It's been around a long time. It's just a matter of what's necessary for each individual city to reduce its skyline.
So now it's time to hear from the council. What, um, what do you all desire? Do you have any comments on what's being presented?
Good question. Thank you. So first of all, I really want to thank you for putting all this information together because it's, it's way more than I'd given you and, and. So, uh, you know, I really appreciate that and I want to make sure everybody can get a copy of that to relay it back to, you know, the individuals who've asked about this. And then, you know, second of all, you know, I just want to reiterate that, you know, this was again in response to some questions some citizens had about lighting issues. And when we looked at, you know, the response, our policy was very restricted. And so this is kind of an opportunity to, to light, you know, loosen some of those restrictions. I mean, a lot, a lot of those things, I mean, the, you know, the, uh, dark sky policy and those kinds of things. A lot of that's kind of long-term implementation, you know, things you don't do overnight. But, you know, if we realize a policy, when we're ready to do those things, you know, we won't be restricted by it.
But one of the key factors, I think, goes back to Mr. Harvey's question is, how do we address the matter of cost? Do we, do we mirror what we do with, with road humps? Or is it going to be something different?
And that was, that was one of the suggestions.
Biggest issue on the plate, really.
Yeah, with, with the shared costs, I mean, just looking at some of the other cities, what, what they've done. But again, the, the recommended changes are just to give us the opportunity if we want to do something.
I've heard differing opinions from people. I live in a neighborhood where there's, uh, limited, uh, lighting, but we have a lot of people that like that. And, uh, we have a lot of trees, and so even if you have the lighting, it doesn't get its full effect. Then you have people that live in areas where they're concerned about crime. Um, and, uh, so they're in favor of more lighting. So there's nobody right and nobody wrong in this, but it would seem as though we, uh, kind of take the temperature of our communities and, uh, our neighborhoods and see what, what people are looking for. I mean, you've already got a head start that some people are interested in revising the policy, but what's the overall thinking about? Because once you, once you allow outside of the, the norms, you allow, uh, extra streetlights, another neighborhood may ask for the same thing, and pretty soon we may have an abundance of these requests. Maybe not if the cost stays the way it looks like it could be. But it would be interesting to reach out to the public and see what people feel overall, citywide, about, um, increasing, uh, uh, street lighting. And it would give us an opportunity to, uh, let them know we're looking at some of these other options to, uh, have efficient lighting that's better than our sodium lighting, I think is what, uh, we have up all around the city.
Yes, sir, the average of sodium.
So we can have a discussion with the public through some, some communications.
Another aspect of this is that we, we have to bring in the cost somewhere.
Sure.
And why we have defined what we do with our lighting, it's all about motor safety. If we bring into the fact of pedestrian safety or safety in a neighborhood, then we're going to have to bring in different parameters in terms of spacing those lights in different neighborhoods in terms of what the community feels their particular neighborhood requires. Or they are desirous of, I should say, but required. Uh, so possibly, uh, it's called, we can walk away from this tonight and not give you any answers other than thanks for the information. We'll ponder on this a little bit more. Uh, I think the, but the biggest thing is, do we have, can we put a survey out and get some information off of our citizens by, by web survey? And do something like that, just to see, get the temperature, uh, what, what, what citizens feel about this chair.
So excuse me, anyways, but does that affect, so having more lights, how does that affect our, our power as far as averages? If we have more power, what, no, I'm serious, I don't know.
Okay. Hopefully power outage, it just affects the cost. We pay, the city pays for streetlights. And so one of the things cities have done in the past, they've done a streetlight survey because we started to discover that in some cases, we're paying for more. A individual business has the ability to request a light on theirs, and they pay Encore directly for that streetlight setup there because they don't think it's enough light. Uh, and even individual residents actually can make the same, uh, decision to contract with Encore to have what is a light that's funded, just like through your electric bill. And so from our standpoint, we need to get you a couple of things is, what do we pay per streetlight? It's not a whole lot, but the question is if we move from a thousand to one every five hundred feet, of the, how many lights we have, what does that number look like? So that you understand what that cost looks like, cause it's not just the installation cost, it's the annual cost. We, we pay an electric bill on each of those lights.
I just didn't know if our infrastructure is.
It's not.
Look, I'm thinking New York and blackouts.
If it goes out, it's still gonna go out, but it's not gonna go out just because.
Concerned about overloading.
Yeah, overloading, yeah.
And if, if, if we're gonna increase the cost, it's gonna be a budgeted amount for power. And what is the stress on the grid? Probably negligible considering the size of our city, but there it is, you know, and we, we talked about brownouts and blackouts, those things kinds of occurring. It could be in a possible effect as well.
So the ongoing cost of new streetlights, uh, over time is, is going to have an impact on our ability to fund other services.
That's right. Which is a burden on the taxpayer.
And I don't think we're, we're talking about a scenario where we revise a policy and then all of a sudden we're gonna be putting a streetlight every two hundred fifty feet. I mean, this is, uh, like Greg already alluded to. I mean, it's, it's a lot of, uh, a lot of difference between people wanting lighting and not wanting it. So it seems like it'd be kind of a case-by-case situation. You know, a citizen makes requests and we give them the policy and say, by the way, you got paper.
Maybe a brother, a good, a good point that I had thought of, cause some people may be looking at it as traffic safety and others are looking at it, I know for sure, as safety, just walking through their neighborhoods and seeing what's going on outside. So that's why I think the idea that we pass on this information in some type of a news release and then ask for feedback about what people feel, because I think in different areas of our community, we're gonna get different responses about, well, I want more lights for crime, I want more lights for, for safety because we hear so much about these speeding cars. It'd just be interesting to see, and in my opinion, be interesting to see. Uh, it's a good discussion, it's a good presentation, thank you. But I think there's a lot of information out here now that we can pass on to the public and, um, get some, get some feedback.
Very good.
If we ask, and so what we'll do, we, uh, we want to do it around since we're in the holiday season, uh, kicking it out in January.
Oh, sure, sure.
Uh, and we'd like feedback from council of questions. We'll get a draft of some questions to you and, and send it out via email for feedback. And our goal would be to roll it out, uh, around the beginning of the year and then give folks about a month or so to respond and then bring back the results of the survey.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, item two B, discussion of ordinances that pertain to trailer parking, Assistant Chief Free.
Evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Um, so tonight, I'm gonna, we're gonna cover our trailer parking ordinance. Uh, hopefully highlight some issues we have with our current ordinances, provide the council with some, um, considerations going forward and then ask for direction of what you may be looking to restrict in regards to, uh, trailer parking in certain areas. So a brief history, in twenty fourteen, we amended ordinances, uh, to address the parking of RVs. Um, and you'll see this measurement eleven by eight by thirty-six come up in the ordinances later. Um, as you well know, we constantly receive calls of illegal trailer parking or trailers blocking the streets. And so our officers are at the responding to these calls. We want to make sure they have the best information available and the ordinances are up to date to allow them, um, to respond best to our citizens. Uh, the ordinances that we have right now, currently, they do contradict each other, and I'll give you that here just to say. So again, you guys have seen these pictures before, um, just examples of calls that we respond to of different trailers, whether it be RV, boat trailer, pop-up trailers, um, but this is what our officers are responding to. Um, not on a daily basis, but when we get the calls, this is what we're coming up to do. So our current ordinances, the ones that deal with trailer parking, um, the first one nineteen dash one fifteen, this was originally intended to deal with semi-trailers, tractor trailers. However, the word trailer by its definition is within that ordinance. Um, it makes it unlawful to park any trailer within the city unless it's in an area zone, as I, I want, I too. Also, those are outdated, outdated zoning areas as we've recently changed. Now we just have industrial zoning. Um, nineteen sixteen contradicts fifteen and allows for parking for trailers as well as RVs in residential areas as long as it's not within, as long as it's not larger than that eight by eleven by thirty-six. Looking at other cities, that's pretty much boilerplate, um, sizes. And I believe that is because you have two trailers parked that way, you can get a fire apparatus in between them. So the cities that have the, the, uh, height restrictions, it's pretty much the same, um, just the same, uh, height and, uh, width, city by city. Um, one sixty-one, again, restricts parking of any trailer on streets except for those that have been designated as truck routes, and there's twenty-nine of them. Again, that was meant mainly for, um, our tractor trailers, but it talks about trailers as well. So looking at other cities, um, Cedar Hills restrict parking of trailers unless they're hitched to a motor vehicle. Um, De Soto then allow, um, vehicles or trailers that exceed the gross vehicle weight rating of fourteen thousand five hundred pounds. Frisco doesn't allow, uh, parking of vehicles or trailers for more than three hours. So the potential issues for those for Cedar Hill, it doesn't allow for, uh, the parking of certain trailers, um, if they're unattached to vehicles. Maybe it might be they're moving, so it's unhitched. Um, De Soto requires the officer to be able to know what that, uh, G, the gross vehicle weight rating for the manufacturer's, um, specifications are. And then Frisco, speaking with them, they have an entire parking unit dedicated strictly to this because they have that manpower. Um, because if it's more than three hours, they'll get a call, they'll go out there, they'll either chalk the tires, they'll end, they'll note the time. They'll come back three hours later, but they have the personnel dedicated to do that. We just don't have that personnel. So potential issue if you're looking, you're going that route. Um, some considerations that we'd like to bring before you, uh, a point. Yes, sir.
Rewind just a second. So in any of those ordinances, are there dimensions that are cited? Are we the only one that has the dimensions?
No, 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 Frisco has dimensions, De Soto has dimensions, most cities have dimensions, and it's those.
Is it that dimension is still focused on that forty footer or that fifty-three footer?
The dimensions that you see is focused on, I think, what was it, thirty-six? Yeah, so nothing more than thirty-six feet.
Okay, I think we need to kind of plant that in the back of our minds when we're talking about a trailer. If we're still talking about something less than thirty-six, it's still gonna be okay?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So considerations, uh, a, yes, sir.
Mr. Harverson.
No, just a clarification on that. You have to go back to the, uh, uh, one of your early screens where we have three dimensions.
Eight by eleven by thirty-six.
Right, that's the one you need to key on. Uh, the larger trailers, of course, everybody's concerned about eighteen-wheelers parking on the street, and that's dealt with in a different way. But those right there were, uh, uh, were numbers that they came up with when they were trying to, uh, figure out what would, when legally parked with your, uh, right, left hand, right-hand tires, eighteen inches from the curb, cause that's the law. So if you're at the extreme eighteen inches on both sides of the street, what causes our fire apparatus, school buses, and fire, and, uh, garbage trucks to be able, not to be able to get through there? And those were the dimensions that were tested by the police department, fire department, with vehicles that they placed on the street and then brought the apparatus in. So those are really proven out, and I don't think they get outdated. That, that is a critical part of this ordinance that, uh, that I think we need to focus on.
Yes, sir. Um, considerations, uh, a point in time ordinance. Um, this was gonna provide clarification officers for enforcement, whether that be uh, no trailer parking after a certain time in the night. That allows people to use trailers during the. uh, no trailer parking after a certain time in the night, that allows people to use trailers during the day, if they need to unload, load, um, allows for, um, yard crews, uh, yard maintenance workers to have their trailers out. Um, another consideration is just to restrict all trailer parking within residential areas. Uh, you can also build in exemptions for that, for, again, temporary loading and loading, which would speak to those, uh, people trying to do business, um, emergency, uh, vehicles, obviously, or anything, uh, used by the church, ISD, the school district, or the city. Um, or the, you always have the option of just keep the ordinances as, the ordinances as they are, but again, they are contradictory right now, and it's not fair to our officers or the citizens, if they're going out there, we just might have one officer look at a particular ordinance and say, okay, you can't park a trailer here, but then another officer looks at the ordinance below that, not knowing, and then it says, okay, you can. Um, so we're just looking for direction and considerations of what is it that the council wants to restrict, and then we will go forward from there.
How about the first step is to y'all take a look at what's contradictory and eliminate the contradictions? If, if, if we have, we have stuff fighting against each other, it seems like the best thing to do is resolve that first. And then we can take a look at the rest of the pieces of this, you know, the, the eight by eleven by thirty-six, to focus on basically what it was, was a forty footer and a fifty-three footer, which are the semi-trailers. Well, there's actually twenties, forties, and fifty-three, and naturally, there's a fifty-nine out there now. Uh, it's a legal fifty-nine foot trailer, being hauled by an eighteen-foot tractor, um, which we, of course, is never going to allow in our neighborhood. So just if you eliminate some of those contradictions, phase out whatever is bad for us, bring back something that we can look at and say, where can we do this? And at the same time, minimize the staff having to rework this, spend so much time on something that's unenforceable, put some teeth in it so it is enforceable, and get rid of the pieces that are unenforceable that cause our officers. What we don't wanna do is have you guys have, have issues of, I don't know, one of the bullets was that the officer has to be able to read and understand the ordinance to the degree that they go out and take a look at it, they're basically citing the law and ordinance, and others go, I don't think so. So if you can take a look at that, kind of clean those things out first. Is there any other comments?
Well, no, I think that's fair enough, um, we, we at some point as a council have to figure out what our communities want in terms of allowing storage of, of, a lot of times unused camper trailers, pop-up campers, utility trailers, and, uh, boat trailers. And a lot of people would prefer to put them out in front of their house and take driveway space, but that doesn't necessarily match up with what the neighborhood wants, when they realize we've opened storage on a public street. He's exactly right that these ordinances were born out of the eighteen-wheel truck prohibitions, and they just stuck them together, but by definition, suddenly, these other trailers that I've mentioned are included in there, and it is difficult for the officers to write a ticket when these ordinances, and there's several of them, there's not just one, there's several of them that conflict, or seemingly could conflict. You work hard to write a ticket, then you go to court, and they throw it out because it's, it's conflicting with another ordinance, so. That, yes, your advice that we have them clean up the language and get that straight down, but I think we certainly should revisit what we want, and you suggested this, that, that we get back to them with what we want relative to what we want parked regularly on our streets, and when, uh, the, the, the grass, the grass-cutting guys and other people that are moving, you gotta let them be there. There's gotta be a way to write it, and I'm sure some of those other ordinances have done a better job of writing that than us. And, and, uh, so that all goes, so there's two parts to this, the way I see it. Clear up the language that's causing the confusion on the tickets, the enforcement, and then we can get back together and talk about what we wanna see on our streets.
Yes, sir, I wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to make it clear, we, we are cleaning that up, the language, obviously, to remove anything that's contradictory, it's just while we're doing that, we don't wanna have to come back and say, we've cleaned up the language, now what would y'all like to do? We were trying to get everything, we cleans the language, do all the thing in one fell swoop, come back with what council would like to see. That way, we're not just going back.
Uh, Mr. McFernette, the city manager.
Mr. Contreras brought up a point about the tried and true point of, of having it measured in a vehicle going by. And, and it seems like, I know, at least with the fire equipment, so if it gets longer, now is it getting wider as, as well too?
Every time.
Okay, so.
So we need to re, we need to retest that particular aspect of this, Chief?
There's a potential that that might be.
There's laws, I, I assume there are laws out there that restrict the, the width of those vehicles, because those streets are only so wide. So, I mean, you got, you know, a vehicle here, a vehicle here, I still gotta be able to get my vehicle down through there without hitting anything, so.
That's another assessment of our emergency vehicles to see what the width, like, with the new quit, you know, what, what's, what's the new quit look like in terms of its width versus the old ones?
I think your main issue on a lot of that is, is as you get ready to turn, you have to take into account that that rear end kicks out, and when you have parking too close to a corner or where it kicks out, that, that's how we have a lot of accidents, is those kickouts from the rear end.
So the other consideration on residential streets are, is, you know, that you might entertain is, do you want parking on, to allow parking on both sides of the streets? Because, you know, as these vehicles are bigger, uh, as wide as they could be given an ordinance, if you've got somebody parked on the other side, that just reduces your space to get through. So, some cities have gone, has, have gone through, and they said, hey, on the north side, south side, east to west, you know, we're not gonna allow parking. Um, but that's another consideration. And, um, it, again, it's, it's one of those things that we've heard from y'all for a number of years. This, the, the specific dimensions that we're speaking of, they actually came up back in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, we had a RV down on Green Hills, and that was very problematic for us. And, uh, Mr. Hager's office, uh, worked with us, you know, there's some cities that will allow RV waivers for seven days. We decided not to go with that because I think there was some specific people in town that had RVs and, or maybe relatives that would come in. It's whatever you guys want us to, to focus on, there are a lot of different options. Uh, those are just some of, of the options to entertain.
Okay. Thinking about our law enforcement officers, when you look at these things, write them with the, with the perspective, what can be enforced? I think it's very important, that, that we don't send officers out on, on goose chases, you know, to take, to chase after something that is unenforceable. So writing something that can be enforceable and survey your own departments, survey the law enforcement, you know, your own officers, and say, what can they think of in terms of writing something that I can actually enforce, when I have to, when I go out on a call line something for this? Because we don't wanna hamstring them, you know, you're handcuffed. Law enforcement, but, uh, we don't wanna, we don't wanna cause a problem for our law enforcement officers to have to interpret a law that's ambiguous. So even input from your own law enforcement officers would be awful, City Manager.
So I think, we actually brought an ordinance, and so, we've already developed an ordinance, and the reason we brought it back is because the council wanted to talk more about the ordinance, and maybe we should have brought the specifics that were in the ordinance also for this discussion, because that's what they had done, they had drafted one, and we said we needed to talk about it some more. So, I don't know if there's.
City Manager, the original ordinance, it was the point in time, um, city attorney's office recommended eleven P M, no trailer parking after eleven P M.
So we'd already done that work, and that's what we brought to you to approve, and when we got to the approval, council said we might need to workshop it because we might wanna add more teeth to it. So I guess the question we ask is, we have an ordinance, so what you'd like for us to do is take that ordinance and add some more teeth to it? So, what's that next step for us?
I remember that eleven P M thing that I mentioned. I can't agree with that, you know, like, we would have visitors, we have guests come into town, and they've got something, you know, we're gonna make them move it after eleven P M when they're sleeping or what's on, like, I think even that aspect of it is unreasonable for what we're looking at, in terms of citing a particular, like a pop-up trailer or an RV for a particular point in time, somebody visiting from twelve states away, saying, you gotta move it after eleven P M? I don't know, it's just.
You could treat it.
Reason has to be calculated.
Like you treat the, um, pots where there is a permitting process.
That's a whole different story, yeah.
That, because what, the question is, do you want someone to, I use my mother, she has a fifth wheel, do you want her fifth wheel permanently on your street? So there's a difference between the visitor versus the long-term, and so we have some long-term, and then we have some temporary. And so the question for council is, how stringent are, everything has a way to get around it. And so what we can do is create something or add something to it that gives the discretion where they can actually apply so that we know that this is a permitted use for a set point in time, not, not the next six months, but.
Good to come.
So, if someone were visiting, just in that potential scenario, if somebody were visiting, stay at night, they have to go get a permit, special permission to park just one night? And then that, that's.
Some cities do that.
See, that's what I'm thinking, it's not reasonable.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I don't wanna go there.
But then, I also wanna ask, when, when you get calls, that's what I ask about the major, the calls, so do you, y'all typically get calls after eleven P M, somebody's parked the trailer up?
Typically, the calls are during the day, uh, something that they, blocking, uh, the road, or it might be communication from, from staff, somebody emailing council, and that gets filtered down to us, hey, this trailer's been parked a few days, go check on it. We'll make contact with the owner, trot, obviously, to get them to move it first, that's. Most of these ordinances, we're not going out there looking for these things, it, it's, we're being told about it as we're going out, and our first option always is go to the owner and say, hey, do you mind moving this, it's causing an issue? We don't wanna be out citing, uh, individuals citing our citizens just for other trailers, we want them to, to be able to move, so we always have that conversation first.
So lots of the calls in daytime are.
Yes, sir.
And citizen issue rather than officer issue.
Absolutely, my office gets tons of calls, uh, from citizens, councils, ask the mayor, things like that. And the issue for us was, we are limited on what we can do, and we have to respond, well, there's nothing we can do, and that's why we brought this, is because we were looking for the ability to enforce, if it's not something we're concerned about, then we can just tell citizens that we don't have a rule on it, and that's okay too, but we just wanna make sure we educate folks and say that, yes, it may be an eyesore to you, it's like the eighteen-wheelers on the interstate. You know, we get calls about it all the time, but there are some laws that supersede us that permits people to park eighteen-wheelers where they're parking.
Just one more note, uh, my experience is, if you're looking down at Greenbrier, and somebody puts a, a trailer out there for a few days, a boat trailer, or a pop-up trailer, something like that, it's hardly noticeable, because ninety percent of the cars out there are parked in the back. Even when they have company, it's not noticeable, and those streets are, think a little bit wider than, uh, Fair Meadows or Candlelight. And think of those streets during the day, think about them after five o'clock when everybody comes home. Now you're gonna add camper trailers, pop-up trailers, boat trailers, for any period of time, you're only, you think you'd get phone calls now about the problems up there? What's a street in your district that goes from center, uh, to Wheatland that, uh, runs down by Malone's office? It's, uh, just south of the table, but you go down that street, because it's got some bends in it, and look at the cars even in the middle of the day, look how tight that is. You add in allowing people at any time to park these types of trailers we've been talking about, you're creating more problems than you had before. So, I understand what the police are up against, and I wanna try to help with that, but I don't want to lose track of the fact that we've got some pretty tight streets, and we get a lot of complaints in those neighborhoods I mentioned, not to mention some that I haven't mentioned, uh, Johnson Street. We heard a lot about that about a year ago, about people being unsafe to drive up, down, and down there and open up your car doors. It's all legal parking, but it's maxed out, Hollywood Park is the same way. So you start adding trailers to the mix, um, we have to think through that very carefully, what we want for those neighborhoods.
One thing that, uh, this is gonna be very controversial, I'm gonna say it anyway, is that from my experience living in Europe, some cities that have streets that were built in the sixteen hundreds, seventeen hundreds, and eighteen hundreds, there, there's no room to go anywhere, they authorize parking on sidewalks. And I'm thinking of some of the streets up in District Five, that were built, what, forty, fifty, sixty years ago. People are parking their cars on both sides of the street when they come home from work. I don't think one of our emergency vehicles could make it through one of those streets. One of the really outlier considerations in looking in terms of safety to our emergency crews is, should we consider some type of allowing parking on a sidewalk after a certain time, so that we can mitigate the circumstance of having an emergency vehicle that can't get where they need to go? And I said, I know it's controversial, and we have an ordinance right now that says you park on a sidewalk, we're gonna ding you, I know we've got that one. But I'm looking, I've driven up in District Five at night several times, at, to citizens' request, to see how tight it really is. Uh, two cars cannot go in different directions on some of those streets at night, it's just totally impossible, somebody has to be moving.
You might run into some ADA issues and different things like that if you're, uh.
I get it, I get it, I know, and as I said, I know it's controversial, it's very, very complicated, but somewhere in this mix, what do we do about these streets that are so tight, they were built fifty years ago, they can't, can't take your car on both sides? And like Chief was saying, do we eliminate parking on one side of the street, where do they go? I don't know.
So, ju- just as a reference, today I was out, and I drove by Hyde Park. Um, and there was a trailer that's used for some event company, it looked like. Um, it's fairly small trailer, enclosed, looked like maybe for one of these pop-up entertainment things. And it was chalked in the middle, you know, in the street. You know, some of what we're talking about, and, and Mary, kind of jumping ahead maybe to, to something, but let's just bite this off a little bit at a time. I mean, if we can get the ordinance where we want it, but let's deal with, what do y'all wanna see? What do y'all, what kind of calls do y'all wanna field, um, and, and do y'all want us to field when we, when we get these calls come in? And, okay, well, you know, that, that is legal, um, or, no, yeah, we can get somebody in there and take a look at that, because it shouldn't be out there parked in the street. Uh, because right now, what, uh, Assistant Chief Freeze mentioned earlier, we have in, in these ordinances where we talk about tractor trailers, but then we, it's a comma, and we talk about trailers, and they're in the same ordinance. So, some of it, now, I talked to Mr. Hager, hey, how about we just define what we're talking about here, and everybody's on the same page? Um, uh, he wasn't sure he liked that idea because you get into a lot of different things, but we can revisit that. But if we can paint the picture, y'all paint the picture on what y'all want these residential streets to look like, and we can work.
Right, right.
Mayor, the one thing that I would say that we have unique, is we have different sized streets, and maybe a start for us, based on what you've said to us, is that we start with the definition of a street width, and, and if we start to do prohibition, I mean, I know if someone's coming to visit you, but I can't imagine someone pulling up in Hollywood Estates and, and parking an RV, it's just not, it's not feasible. And so maybe we can define it by the size of the streets as a start, and, and get into the width of the street as a, a beginning point, and if you wanna make it stringent, if this doesn't at least alleviate some of the challenges we're having, then we can go to the next. Most of it's aesthetics, uh, I've been in cities that prohibit RVs completely, you can't even park them in your driveway in the front, because they don't want it to be in their neighborhoods, and so, different communities have different, but as the generation has started to move to be more mobile, you see them more frequently, but it requires special parking in the back and things like that for them, and so, I think we need to just, I think what we were looking for is, from the ordinance we developed, is, do you want more or less teeth? And it sounds like the time, uh, works, but it doesn't work in all scenarios. And so, why don't we bring back a few examples of things before we start full throttle with a ordinance? Would that be acceptable?
Sometime in late January would be good.
Late January, does that work for everyone? Works for us, thank you.
Uh, folks, we are past our time, uh, we do have one more item on our agenda. Can we get to it quickly, City Secretary?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
We're trying to find a date.
Yes, sir, the mayor and council, the way it started out is that we had some leftover applicants to be interviewed by the mayor and council for the boards, committees, and commissions. We looked at a date, some dates close to Thanksgiving, it didn't quite work out. And what's happening sometimes is that we get real close, but we don't get everybody, and, and it seems like sometimes it feels, it must feel like to the person that's not able to get their scheduling managed to attend with everybody else, sort of like they're, uh, being left out, and they want to participate, we want all of you to participate. So the question is, is, we know it takes four of you to make a decision, um, in a regular city council meeting or a special called meeting, and if there was another date that y'all wanted to consider, or pick a date, and then those that can attend in numbers of four or more is acceptable to the council, that's what we were hoping to get some feedback on, thank you.
Come, I think, I think what City Secretary is trying to get us to say is that we'll find a date that's most agreeable to everybody for four, and if we can find four, we'll go ahead with that, and if we can't make it, we'll have to go on with this, like, I think that's basically what I'm hearing. Uh, we would continue on as a quorum and do the very best, we will, what's the word, we will strive to get all seven if we possibly can, if we can't, we will move on with as many as we can get to have a quorum.
That's certainly your, your priority, sir, just, just.
Yeah, Mr. McFernette.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, one of the issues is that, you know, we have some openings. We only have, I don't know if we have enough to fill the openings in, in that line, and, and I would rather much, rather do it on a fish. I would rather much, rather do it on a fish and sea way of doing it in one slate versus a special meeting to put one or two on, special meeting to put another two on or whatever. And it, and it's, I, I guess I would ask this council also to, to reach out to people and get asked them to volunteer and on, on boards as well, so we can.
Well, you know, thinking about those lines, Mr. McPratt, would it, would it be possible then to schedule one or two interviews during a normal city council day? If we take time during a briefing session, uh, you know, cut down on that briefing session, schedule one hour for, for interviews during a normal council day, when most of us are trying to, to really key on that, on the first and third Tuesday. And that be the case, we don't have to have a special, we can try and fill as many as we can on a spot basis instead of trying to do fifteen or twenty. And just do, do the best we can. Here it is, we're striving to get people into places and, but at the same time trying to accommodate our schedules, which are very, very complex to try and get seven people. So, what do you think about that?
Well, could, we also consider, and I don't know for folks that are working, how feasible this is, but can we consider coming in a little bit early, uh, rather than six o'clock to knock a couple of those out?
On a regular council day?
On a regular council?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause sometimes we have done that, we've done a five, we've done a five-thirty on a Tuesday or third, uh, first or, first or third Tuesday. Can you work with that, City Manager?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, very good. So do we, is there any date that's been proposed, it's workable for anybody yet? I know the fifth and thirteenth came up, but I said, it'd be totally impossible for me. The fifth's already passed.
The twentieth is the next regular meeting.
Do we have applicants to interview for the twentieth?
Yes, sir, you got, um, make sure there's about five of them on you.
Which is a good number.
We have, I'm sorry, we have five?
About five, yeah. So then for the twentieth?
A lot of them.
Since that's the council day, yeah, they, I lock that day. Twenty, just the twentieth. We go for a five-thirty on the twentieth to interview? Five-thirty on the twentieth?
Very good.
Okay. September twentieth. All right, uh, time is seven oh seven. Uh, please enter into city council chamber as soon as possible.
It's in there.
All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience to be with us as we ensure that we've got everything in order. As we move forward with tonight's city council meeting, the official timestamp on calling to order is seven twenty-two, city secretary. First item of business on our agenda is the invocation, Pastor Bill Engelhardt from Faith Baptist Church, please rise.
Let us invoke God. God who is spirit, light, and love, guide this city council meeting. God who is spirit, we ask for your presence in this council chamber to touch our minds and hearts. We also ask for your presence to protect all Duncanville public servants, especially those who serve and protect our police and firemen. God who is light, we ask for enlightenment to know and to do your will to make wise decisions for the benefit of all the citizens of Duncanville. God who is love, who revealed your love at the first Christmas, we ask for humility, the humility of Christ. Humility he showed when he became fully human and loved us. God who is spirit, light, and love, we thank you for hearing and answering our petitions, amen.
Thank you Pastor, please join me in pledges to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please proceed. Moving on to item number one on our agenda, it is reports. City council, there is some possibility that my mayor's report may exceed three minutes for essential business to discuss and some other comments. So with that, I am asking for a motion from the city council to allow me to exceed three minutes for my mayor's report.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to, to accept my three minute time in excess by Mr. Koontz and a second by Mr. McBurnett. Please vote on accepting my exceeding the three minutes for my mayor's report. Our board is dark. Roll call, Mr. Bear Cruz, Mr. McBurnett, Mr. Koontz. And myself, thank you very much, approved unanimously to exceed three minutes. First item I want to cover is item five. Let me get to it. Item five B, on our agenda for items for individual consideration. The last time that this item was on our city council agenda, I recused myself from this item and I will do so again tonight. And there have been some questions in terms of why I do so, I'll be very clear, transparent, and honest with you. I managed some properties for someone and I received compensation for the management of that property. And one of those properties is within the two hundred foot perimeter of Wheatland Plaza. So if you look at the entire package and look at those addresses in terms of individuals that have received letters, in terms of for or against what goes on with Wheatland Plaza, I received one of those letters. So in that aspect, I have a conflict of interest with this particular item. So I have, will once again recuse myself from this particular discussion and I have filed a conflict of interest statement with the city secretary this date. That's why I want everybody to know and understand why does the mayor get up and leave when Wheatland Plaza is discussed, that is the essence of it. That's the hard stuff, the easy stuff now. First thing I wanted to do is thank our Parks and Recreation staff, Mr. Stevenson and Noah Garcia for a fabulous parade on December second and moving the venue to Armstrong Park. It now is open to our public and I see children over there looking at our Christmas tree even tonight. Secondly, I want to thank our Chamber of Commerce and Duncanville Independent School District Superintendent Mark Smith for his cooperation and the chamber's support of Toys and Joys, which was a December fourth concert, which was a wonderful community event with a lot of choirs, children's choirs. And I want to also recognize that Councilmember McBurnett, Councilmember Contreras, and Councilmember Cherry were present for that and it was really a wonderful, oh, Mr. Bear Cruz was there as well, so thank you for attending, it was really a great event. Next item I wanted to cover real quickly is I received a couple of comments from citizens thanking us as a city for putting exercise equipment in Redbird Park. So that was something that we did discuss, in fact, I was up there today and some people are actually using the equipment itself. And the last item that I want to cover is Coffee with the Mayor, is Thursday, twelve o'clock in the senior center, anybody that wishes to attend, please do so. That concludes the mayor's report, am I within time or did I exceed it? Covered it. Okay, well, we're up now, all right, so that concludes the mayor's report. Going on to any city council members' reports. Councilmember Cherry.
Okay, thank you, thank you mayor. I'd like to invite all of, anyone from District Four out on Saturday at the senior building from ten thirty to twelve for Coffee and Cocoa. We'll have Gus Garcia, Director of Planning and Neighborhood Services, I'm sorry, Jeremy Tennant from Director of Neighborhood Services, and Gus Garcia from Managing Director of Development Services, thank you.
Any other council members' reports? Seeing none, moving on to city manager's report.
I'm going to yield my time, the police chief has asked to do a presentation and it may take over three minutes and I'd like to see if council would be willing to indulge his presentation time.
But we need to go ahead and take this under advisement as a three minute exception, so Chair Lieutenant Dean motion to exceed.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Contreras, second by Mr. McBurnett, council please vote on exceeding three minutes for the city manager's report. Unanimously approved, Mr. Chief Levigne.
Thank you ma'am, thank you mayor, council. Almost daily, our police officers do an incredible job. As you see, there are a number of them here tonight, but right now, I'd like to call two of them specifically to the front, Sergeant Ron McCarty and Officer Darius Rogers. As they come up, I'm going to explain to you an event that took place a couple of months ago. There's some incidents that they do daily that is, is just incredible work, but some of the incidents are so profound and in this case life-saving that we think it important to come up and present these types of awards in front of you, our governing body, and in front of our citizens. So on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at approximately one forty-three AM, these officers were dispatched to a call for service at a donut shop regarding a nine-one-one call from a female stating that her husband had just collapsed. Further, she advised that she did not believe her husband was breathing. Patrol Sergeant Ron McCarty arrived on scene within a minute and observed the male was on the floor, unconscious, not breathing, and had no pulse. He immediately began CPR. At approximately one forty-five in the morning, patrol officer Darius Rogers arrived on the scene to assist. He continually monitored the male's pulse and alerted dispatch to the ongoing CPR in progress and the need for medics. After approximately two minutes of chest compressions, the male took a deep breath and our officers were able to locate a faint pulse. At approximately one forty-seven AM, Duncanville medics arrived and transported the male to a hospital ER. The male survived, has since fully recovered, and is back at work. Duncanville EMS chief Kevin Bragg advised that our personnel played a critical role in the male's surviving a significant heart attack and are deserving for their life-saving efforts. So at this point, we'll see a brief clip of what took place that morning. So again, it's, it's a real brief clip, but it's a real life and obviously it took longer, as I mentioned, two minutes of chest compressions. The medics arrived, he turned out to have had a heart attack, but they saved him, and for that, I think we ought to applaud their efforts. Want to present the awards, take a few pictures? Would y'all like for your family to come up real quick?
Thank you city manager and thank you Chief Levigne, Chief Freeze, and Chief Stogner, and Officer McCarty and Williams. We have often recognized our police force as being the best in the world and this is just another example of the exemplary individuals that we have on our service. Thank you very, very much, thank you. We do not have any formal proclamations or presentations, moving on to item number three, citizens' input. Pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero zero seven of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item, however, the act prohibits the city council from delivering any issues not on the public and the item. In non-agenda issues, may be referred to city staff for research and any future action, all persons addressing are subject to city council adopted rules and limitations. And those rules and limitations for the city of Duncanville, any comments made are limited to two minutes. Individuals that wish to speak in front of city council have submitted cards to me, I do have those cards in front of me. And in keeping with the city council's rules of procedure adopted October of eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, electronic mail comments will no longer be read, however, those comments are provided to each of us, the city council members, and they do become part of the record for the minutes of this particular meeting. We have four individuals who wish to speak on item five B. As is the practice of this city council, when there are citizen comments that are addressing a particular item in the agenda specifically, when we have an open public hearing, we reserve those comments to be made during the public hearing rather than citizen comment portion. So these individuals will be called forward during the, the, the public hearing on item five B. For other city comments that I have, the first one I have is Andy Armstrong. And all individuals coming forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me fine? Okay. My name's Andy Armstrong, I represent the Duncanville Police Association, our address is two oh three East Wheatland Road, Duncanville, Texas. During my tenure with the Duncanville Police Department, I've been awarded over forty awards, been offered a year twice, awarded Masterpiece Officer, received letters of praise from US Congresswoman. I was a field training officer, hostage negotiator, armor, and for the last several years, I've been a detective. During my tenure as a detective, I investigated violent crimes as a primary detective in over six homicide investigations. My story isn't much different than the officers and the firefighters that are behind me today. And this city has been a major part of my life for over fourteen years. In those years, I and these men and women have shed our own blood, sweat, and tears for this city. And in some instances in doing so, we actually had to sacrifice a small portion of our humanity to make this city safer. The veil of safety and security are due to their work. With that being said, I'm no longer an employee of this city, as I've moved on to another field of work, which makes you think, why am I even here? I'm here for them and for the citizens. But there are many still people here that are hoping that you hear my words today and their words that I sent you in earlier emails. It's too late to keep me here, but it's not too late for them. I feel that if the issues brought to your attention by the Duncanville Police Association are not answered, that not only will you be losing young officers and firefighters, but you're also going to be losing the more tenured officers and firefighters that are leaders within our respective departments. We understand that when we came to work here that we did sign that proverbial dotted line, but in doing so, we also entered into a contract with the city. This contract stipulates that for our service to the community that we will receive prescribed benefits. Recently, these benefits have either been poorly managed or not available to officers or firefighters due to various issues, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next citizen comment card I have is Patricia Ebert.
Patricia Ebert, one one five South Greenstone Lane, Duncanville, seven five one one six. Let's talk money. I'm hearing that our firefighters have not, are being delayed in their payments for training and then they're delayed again. I'm hearing that a city credit card was denied at Home Depot whenever they tried to purchase work-related supplies. And then, as you all know, tonight, you have received a letter, a formal letter, which is now a public document, from the Duncanville Police Association. You've now heard their spokesperson as, with the comments. And I'm hearing that with the police officers, that whenever they went for mandatory training, city protocol has always been to prepay the travel expenses, the hotel, and the training vendors, and that didn't happen in a couple of instances. And the police officers are contending with the bills not being paid by the city. I'm concerned about that and I am concerned, I had never met the gentleman who spoke for the association, but I'm concerned listening to what he said. What I do know though is, is that the city's budget is based on borrowing millions of dollars off its credit rating. So if we're having trouble paying our bills, how is our credit rating being affected? We've not had a monthly financial report or an investment report for months, so let's talk money. How much money do we have in our city budget?
Thank you. Next comment card is from Brian Kazer.
Good evening, Brian Kazer, one hundred South Main Street. I had two issues that I wanted to speak about tonight. Last week, I was pretty disappointed and very embarrassed, mainly in myself. And this being the fourth Christmas that I've spent in this city, in business downtown, trying to drive sales and create a community, I failed to reach out to the city to see what the plans were for the parade. I had to find out on social media that the parade was being diverted outside of our central business district, diverting sales, diverting a lot of the things that we spent about ninety days planning for. But that communication, I don't feel should only go one way, I do feel that there should be some communication with downtown businesses when there is a severe business disruption about to happen, that we invest money in, that we plan for, and that we expect to see a return on that investment for. So going forward, A, I'll reach out more often to ensure that that connection is made, but this would have been, this is the fourth year and I've been involved for the three previous years, so would just hope for better communication in the future, on parade routes, things like that. Second thing, five A, that's coming up later for fifteen thousand for the official visitor's center. I don't feel that that visitor's center puts heads in beds for that hot tax fund. The Chamber of Commerce isn't supportive of all businesses in town and the landscaping fees, things like that, are not generating more heads in beds for that hotel money, thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is Emily Bridges.
Let me open up my notes here. Good evening, Emily Bridges.
Good evening, Emily Bridges, 418 Oleander Street, 75137. I would like to share a quote given by one of our own city officials back in April 2022 regarding the Wheatland Plaza renovation. What typically takes months to accomplish was done in weeks with the same diligence and attention to detail our citizens expect of us. This person continued with excitement with positive, with what positive changes would be forthcoming with this project. The Ladd property already receives this kind of excitement from our citizens minus the one and a half million dollar advance in its natural state. Is funding needed to preserve, restore, and cherish the land? Yes. Unfortunately, the city-appointed committee cannot raise funding without the designation of the land through an ordinance. In short, resolutions are generally less permanent than ordinances, and respectfully, is not what the citizens are asking or signed a petition for. We want and need this land designated through an ordinance to make it permanent, then volunteers can start their work, and the committee can start to raise funds. After a little homework, I found that the Duncanville Citizen Bond Advisory Committee of 2018 managed to make recommendations, have them reviewed, and managed to get a twenty-one million dollar bond on the ballot in less time than you have been undecided on this piece of land. The citizens do have expectations. With that said, I would like to repeat the earlier quote, "With what typically takes months to accomplish was done in weeks with the same diligence and attention to detail our citizens expect of us."
Next comment card is from Ron Thompson.
Hi, Ron Thompson, 603 Catherine Court. I want to thank you for your time today. I'm here to talk about the ordinance for the Ladd property. An ordinance is important because it is the single thing that allows us as advocates and fundraisers to raise funds, both from institutional funders and the local community. When Bob Ladd drove in from Highland Park to Duncanville to see our plan and celebrate it and tell his friends about what's happening in Duncanville, we have come back to him and said, well, this is what we can do, but we can't do it right now. We can do this, but we can't do it right now. We can do this, but we can't do it right now. Our committee has fulfilled every single promise we have made to this community and to this council. There's no reason to expect that we can't do fundraising to support the community the way that we need to. When a city where over ninety percent is cement, there is a place for people who want to create a vibrant built environment with a vibrant natural environment. There's a place where we can bring people in to talk about the research and the animal life and have the conferences around a natural space. They can't have it at the, at the Ladd, but they can have it at one of these places that we're talking about. There are plenty of opportunities to bring social entrepreneurs into Duncanville to look at what this amazing space we have. And I ask you again, we need the ordinance. We're not obstinate. That's just the tool we need to deliver further on our promise to this council and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Shelton. Oh, I'm sorry. She says she does not wish to speak, and she supports the Ladd property and Wheatland Plaza with no further explanation. Is Diana Shelton here? Okay, thank you.
Mark Graham, 410 Santa Fe Trail. Some of what I was going to say has already been said, but I'll do it real simply. We can't raise funds without an ordinance. That understood with people that we cannot do anything unless y'all decide there's going to be some permanence involved with that land down there. I'm going to also say this. When y'all decided, when the city attorney thankfully agreed in a meeting that yes, that is public land, and citizens can use it, within days, y'all had signs up stating, use it at your own risk, even though it's already covered by whatever insurance y'all have, it's covered. But y'all, y'all did that within days. Twenty-something signs went up just ringing. I mean, just absolutely all the way around that land. Few months ago, I asked for a couple of signs saying, no four-wheel-drive vehicles. I asked for a few posts to block off a couple of trailheads. I asked if we could block off a couple of the entrances off Daniel Dell Road. Crickets. Not one thing have I heard since. Priorities. That land right now needs help. Either you decide you're going to do it, or you punt. And I'm sick of going down there and seeing more and more three-sixties cut into that land when it could be stopped. At your choice.
Shannon Roberts, 906 Rock Canyon. I'm also here in support of the Ladd property and the ordinance. So when we were here last time, a resolution was offered, and we were so appreciative, and I didn't understand the difference between a resolution and an ordinance. So I did a little bit of research, and here's a few things that I've learned. The requirements for enacting an ordinance cannot be bypassed by simply passing a resolution. What you've heard from some of the concerned citizens is, we need, we require an ordinance to do what we believe needs to be done, and we, whoops, we thought we had an agreement with the city of what the plans and the desires were for the citizens per the petition. A resolution generally states a position or a policy of a city. An ordinance is more formal and authoritative. It's more so than a resolution. An ordinance is a local law to regulate people and property and relates to a matter of general and permanent nature. As you've heard, we cannot do, the citizens can't do what we need to do without having an ordinance. So we're ready. We've been waiting. We can, cannot, as you've heard, raise funds. We have free money, grant money, that we've been told we well, are well-qualified for if we pass an ordinance. So we have grants, we have free labor, all of the citizens here that want to help. We have scouts ready to do their Eagle projects. So please, 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 put on your agenda an ordinance for the Ladd property so we can move forward. We will all benefit.
Thank you, Royce Mylum.
Royce Mylum, 623 South Alexander Avenue. Over the years, human population growth in north-central Texas has risen rapidly, while wild areas have largely disappeared. The exotic trees and plants that we have chosen to surround our homes and businesses with, and the poisons and procedures currently used to keep the outdoors firmly under our control, have led to fractured ecosystems that are wildly out of balance. To consider how disrupted our city ecosystem is, let's look back a couple of months to the early days of October. Almost overnight, the leaves of all the sugarberry trees in our neighborhood disappeared, replaced by ghostly webs that made Halloween scary in a new and highly disconcerting way. This plague was caused by a leaf roller moth that is usually kept in check by various birds and predatory insects. At the same time, a pecan leaf aphid also exploded out of control, and every surface anywhere near a pecan tree became covered in a syrupy goo that made being outdoors very unpleasant for us and our four-legged family members. As a naturalist, I was eager to see what effect this was having on Ladd land, and am happy to report that there was none. All of the natural controls were in place and operating efficiently. The sugarberry trees still had leaves, and hooray, there was no syrupy goo. This dual-plague event should provide a potent warning that as fractured ecosystems edge closer to collapse, they threaten not only our general welfare, but eventually our very existence. The citizens of Duncanville are requesting a nature preserve, not another park or recreational center. Ladd land must be viewed as an essential repository for the widest number of native species possible. Diversity creates stability.
Thank you. That concludes our citizen comment period. Moving on to item number four, our consent agenda. One item that I will mention here. At our briefing session, it was recommended and accepted that item 5A, under Items for Individual Consideration, be moved to the consent agenda. So, City Secretary, in reading the items for consent agenda, please include item 5A as you read those items for the consent agenda. We are now in item number four, Consent Agenda, City Secretary.
Thank you. Consent Agenda, Item A, 4A. Consider approval of draft city council meeting minutes for their following city council meetings. Regular city council meeting of September 20, special call city council meeting of September 26, regular city council meeting of October 18, and retreat meeting of October 26 to 28. 4B. Consider a resolution approving a cooperative purchasing agreement with Vortex Companies, Vortex Infrastructure Holdings, LLC, using the Interlocal Purchasing System TIPS Contract 20110401 for pipe-bursting wastewater improvements with a contract amount of $448,264.50 and an additional appropriation of $44,826.45, a contingency equalling ten percent of the original contract price for a total amount not to exceed $493,090.95. Item 4C. Consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of a master interlocal agreement between Dallas County and the city of Duncanville pertaining to road and bridge transportation-related improvements and/or maintenance on or about certain designated roadways situated within the territorial limits of the city of Duncanville. Item 4D. Consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of library materials, books, as needed from Broad Art Company through the Texas Multiple Awards Schedule, TexMass, Contract Number 715-M2 with an estimated expenditure of $65,800. Item 4E. Consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of uniforms and uniform accessories from Impact Promotional Services, LLC, DBA Got You Covered Workwear and Uniforms Incorporated through Byboard, Contract 67D-22 for a discounted unit price bid with an estimated expenditure amount of $81,800. Item 4F. Consider a resolution authorizing the procurement of wireless and data services from Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless through the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Contract Number DIR-TELE-CTSA-003, and the estimated amount of $375,000 over the next five years. Item 5A. Consider, oh, Council to consider a resolution approving a hotel occupancy tax grant for the FY22-23 budget in the amount not to exceed $15,215.68 to the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce for maintenance repairs, landscaping upgrades, computer upgrades, and signage while serving as a Duncanville official visitor center.
Thank you. The Chair Lieutenant motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mr. McNerney. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Concheras. Please vote. Consent Agenda items unanimously approved. For information purposes, we are moving the two executive sessions to the end of our Moving on to item number five, Items for Individual Consideration. I will read the item, and then, once reading the item, I will recuse myself from this particular item. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance approving the request of Monty Anderson, applicant and owner, to include a planned development slash local office retail district on Wheatland Plaza Shopping Center Block 1 Lot A and ABND Alley, more commonly known as 402 Wheatland Road, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. And with that reading, I am recusing myself from this particular item. Timestamp on this, City Secretary, is 7:58. Thank you. And I'm turning the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tem, Joe Veracruz.
All right. Good, good evening. First thing we're going to do is going to let the city attorney explain kind of what's going on here today. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so item 5B was continued from the previous meeting, so the council previously conducted a public hearing on this matter, and the comments remain part of the record and remain as considerations. The council is going to reopen the hearing tonight, but previously expressed comments are part of the record and will continue to be considered, so.
Okay. So motion to open up.
So moved. Second.
Got motion, uh, motion to open up by Councilmember Coontz, second by Don McNerney. Please vote on that. All right, unanimous. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. Basically, this is like was mentioned before by the city attorney, a. Can you all hear me now? Okay, thank you. So as mentioned before, this is basically a continuation of the previous meeting. There were a few items that you all had questions about, which we can touch upon for your, to bring everybody to speed, but we also have the PowerPoint presentation from previously. If you have any specific questions that you'd like to get into, we can go back and do it as well. But just basically talking about what occurred at the November the 15th meeting, there were certain items, like the boutique hotel, there was a question about whether or not that was actually defined. We mentioned that it was defined, it was a separate attachment. We've included it as attachment as a, as a, as a different appendix in this particular item that you guys have before you in the latest edition of everything. It's defined as up here. I won't go into specifics unless you have any specific questions about the definition. Okay, I'll move right along. The Event Center was another question that came into place. Had a conversation with the applicant. There was a question of whether or not it be permitted. There was concern about whether or not that is something that should be looked at as a permitted item or a permitted use or a quote-unquote conditional use under a specific use permit. We've talked to the applicant, came to a agreement, if you will, that we could look at this potentially as a specific use permit, which means that the Event Center would come back before the planning and zoning and also this body to be considered as such. Questions or comments regarding that?
Go ahead, Mr. Harv.
Okay.
Not, not a question per se, but a comment. If you would, please.
Yes, sir.
A little slower.
Oh, definitely.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Moving right along, we also have the conversation about whether the mixed-use component of the central portion, if you recall from the site plan for the, for the multifamily within the center portion of the property, there is a percentage of twenty percent on the ground floor. That is something that the applicant, we discussed apart of the conversations at the last meeting on the 15th, that they're also amenable as well to. Questions, comments, concerns regarding that? Okay. Next item that came up at the, at the 15th meeting as well was the alcohol, or the allowance of alcohol at the particular site, at the Event Center being one of those centers. Anything within three hundred feet of a school within our current ordinance specifies that it has to come before a variance before this body in order for it to be approved. So there is a check and balance on any entity that actually refers, requests alcohol, which is a public meeting before, again, like I said, this body. And again, the presentation for the 15th is up here, just in case there's any specifics or anything. I don't want to belabor that because it was already given nicely by Mr. Warren the last meeting. And there's some other items as well, landscaping.
I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Coontz.
Thank you. With the three hundred-foot separation for alcohol establishments, how many of those spaces are outside of that three hundred-foot spacing?
We have not conducted any calculations in that regard, but as they come in, as anything in the entity that comes in for a calculation for TABC, we would have to go through the measurement triangle, and it goes before our City Secretary as an application, and then it goes to the entity body. It goes before the City Secretary, and then it also goes before the bodies of. It goes before the City Secretary, and then it also goes before the bodies of, uh, building inspections and also planning to confer the distance.
The answer to that question is property line to property line with school. So it's the property line, because this is one lot. So it'll be the property line at Wheatland to, so it'll be the property line to the south, to the east, to the west.
So that would mean if there's a establishment, say, in the far back corner, that would still be considered?
Property at the portal.
So that would still be considered within three hundred feet?
Of a school.
Okay. So even if it's on, in a part of the property that's eight hundred feet away, it's still considered three hundred because of the property, property line? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Moving on to the landscaping, uh, one of the, um, questions or concerns that came up at the last meeting on the fifteenth was that of landscaping. As, as a property currently exists right now, there is very little landscaping on the property. There is a proposal to add a considerable amount of landscaping, and the next slide here was, this is a visual of it. The next slide shows you that they're moving up, producing, excuse me, up to twenty thousand on the property, uh, which Stowe found a minimal considering the current status quo of the property in that regard. Are there any further questions? I'd be happy, actually, we will be happy to entertain for you all.
Nothing right now. What we'll do is, um, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Concheras.
That I didn't notice before, but I thought I heard mention of it. The use of permeable surfaces for parking. There's not really an indication here of how much area, uh, would be considered to be, uh, used in that method. I know we've had a, a small taste of a proper application of this in a, maybe a eight parking space, uh, location just, uh, near Ben Franklin off of West Jespersen. It seems to have performed well, but that was for vehicles. I'm wondering what information we have over a larger area and with more traffic, or if these areas that would be considered would not be high-traffic areas. What are the control measures to make sure that it, uh, it upholds the amount of traffic it would be subjected to?
Nathan Warren, senior planner. For the use of permeable surfaces, uh, the proposal is for this to be allowed in parking spaces in areas of high stormwater activity exclusively. Uh, they would be prohibited in fire lanes. So the, um, permeable surfaces are to be concentrated exclusively in areas of high stormwater activity.
Okay. Are, are those areas identified in any of the drawings that we got? If not, that's okay. I just wondered. I couldn't find them. And I, so I didn't know how large an area that we'd be talking about.
And to address that, this is primarily for the P D, the plan development, and what they're proposing. When we get to the actual, um, uh, site plan, that's when those details are coming into place.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McNabburnett?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Veracruz. Uh, one of the items or the topics is, relates towards the, the buildings. And when it was originally presented, it was going to be condominiums. And, and now what I'm hearing is apartments. Can you please tell me how or why, or?
Sure. Uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember McNabburnett. As you know, uh, you're, you're correct. When we have the town hall meetings, uh, one of the original intentions for the property that is in the center of the, of the development was exactly that, potential for townhomes. We have visited with the developer, and he's amenable to townhomes and condominium, or, sorry, condominium sales. Uh, as we all know, the market has changed in the last, since we had our town hall meetings and the presentations. He's still amenable to it, and in twenty twenty-four is when we anticipate this construction will begin. He's open to exploring those possibilities for condominiums if, again, financing is available, because you have two, two things going on here. Number one, the financing for spec, uh, condominiums is challenging with the interest rates, and certainly banks are, as we know, hesitant to invest in, in spec on, you know, based on the financing, based on the potential. And not just that, we also know the market conditions also are making it difficult for buyers to buy at the higher interest rates. And considering this is a higher-end development and that, uh, that specific building E is going to be on the higher-end scale where it'd be in the neighborhood of one fifty to two dollars per square foot, though you're looking at, and we can talk to Mr. Anderson about that. I know he's going to speak a little bit here. You could be in the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range for a condominium, which could be challenging depending on what financing, uh, the applicant would get. So you have two problems occurring. You have, number one, the financing to build on specifications or speculative construction. And number two, the ability to have clients that would be able to qualify or apply and purchase those, those condominiums. So in speaking to Mr. Anderson about that possibility, he did say that since this is phased and you see the building E is in separate phases, he would be open to potentially doing condominiums for sale if it was phased in and he had ready-made buyers to purchase those, those apartments. With that being said, as you may know, you can still build apartments and you can sell them when the financing terms are better or when the market conditions are better. But we all know when interest rates are high, rental, rentals are what go. And then when interest rates are low, purchases would go. And so we certainly don't want to have, in our opinion, empty condominiums. You want this to be a thriving, active, you know, center where people are going to be shopping and sales tax go up and property tax go up, et cetera, et cetera. So at the current financing and current market conditions, multifamily is probably the highest and best use. But he can certainly speak to that as well.
Okay, Mr. Concheras.
So, uh, to follow along that, that same line of questioning, could we expect that, uh, if these are developed as apartments, that they would be on a par with what we see at Main Station?
So obviously, uh, as part of the planned development, we wouldn't get into those specificities, but we can certainly ask the, the landlord or the owner what type of, you know, quality he's going to be building. I think he did provide some renderings of the building, and it appeared from the facade that they would be high-quality. But I guess form follows function, and if, based on what he's paying for the property, as we know, he paid close to seven point two million. He's investing additional twenty, thirty million. In the sense, form follows function, he's, he's got to build something equivalent to be able to get the rent rates to satisfy the debt service that he would eventually incur. So that kind of forces him to, to develop or build something that would be able to satisfy that debt service. And certainly, we can ask him that, but just from economic development principles, you've got to be able to generate the revenue to cover the debt service, so he wouldn't be able to build a lower-end apartment in that facility based on what he's spending on this construction. And considering what the construction costs are in today's world, again, that's going to also force him to build something much nicer so he can get the rent rates. It might require, as you know, and in areas where there's higher density, you have smaller units and they're higher-priced. In order to satisfy the debt service, he's going to have to satisfy, which lends itself to a solid investment in the project. And I might add that that's what you want, because you want a valuation that's going to be in the thirty to forty million-dollar range, because as you know, the property tax valuations generate more tax dollars for the city's coffers as well as generating more discretionary income on your tenants that generate more sales tax for the center.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if there's no other questions at this particular time, we'll open up the public hearing. And just as a reminder, we'll have, uh, ten minutes allotted. I'm sorry, that's at eight twelve. Ten minutes for, ten minutes against, six minutes rebuttal. First thing I'm going to do is read these public comment cards. And, um, the first one that does not wish to speak is Ms., uh, Leila Ramsey. And she says, uh, she's in opposition. It's the only thing it says there. Next card I have, Ms. Cheryl Epler. Could you come on up? It's your name and address, please.
I'm Cheryl Epler, four oh six Amelia Street, seven five one three seven.
And if you'll start by saying if you're for or against, please.
I'm for the development, but I have a concern. My concern is in regard to the planned development of Wheatland Plaza. My family and I live a few blocks south of the plaza. We have lived there for thirty-one years, and we do care about the development of the plaza. We believe that the businesses that go in there should enhance the quality of life of our neighborhood. My husband and I were disappointed when we heard that one of the possible businesses for the development of the plaza would be a tattoo parlor. Several months ago, my husband, and he wished he was here tonight, but he had a prior commitment. So I'm speaking on his behalf, you might say. So several months ago, he went on a tour of the plaza with Monty Anderson. I think it was in the summertime. Uh, my husband remembers Monty saying there would be no tattoo parlor. The people in the group responded positively to that. So why was there a change? Although more people are getting tattoos nowadays, I guess we're fuddy-duddies. There's still a risk to the skin, and there are still negatives associated with, with tattoos when people want to be hired. A tattoo parlor is not the sort of shop we favor having in the shopping center in our neighborhood. But we're even more opposed to having a bar in Wheatland Plaza because of the negative effects on the surrounding neighborhood. I'm concerned about noise, late-night traffic, possible fights, intoxication, and broken homes. If one of the proposed restaurants has a liquor license, we feel that should be sufficient. But we're opposed to an establishment where the main focus is serving alcohol. Another issue, um, across the street is Middle Reed where both of our children attended. I can recall a few years ago, Minyard Grocery Store had a sign on their door indicated two students, two students could enter at a time. They had a reason for that. I think it's great to have a place for young people. I'm all for that. That was mentioned at the previous meeting. However, I want to know, have plans been made for some kind of security or chaperoning? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Roy Smilam wishes to speak.
Roy Smilam, six twenty-three South Alexander Avenue.
All right, sir, can you tell us if you're for or against?
I am for with reservations. The alley behind our house used to be lined with mature trees and native vegetation that supported life for a variety of animals, including owls and other birds. It also did a good job of blocking the view and noise of commercial buildings and dumpsters. Uh, in twenty twelve, all of the trees were cut down, apparently to minimize landscaping costs. Because the alley was viewed as a waste space, minimally maintained and otherwise ignored, it fell into a degraded state where trash accumulated and was mowed equally with the weeds. In short, it was converted to a place that commercial properties and rental homes have increasingly trended toward landscaping that requires the least amount of effort and cost. Assembly-line landscaping has been widely adopted, using loud machines to quickly mow, blow, bag it all, and go. This devaluing of the land contributes to environmental and urban decay. Nature has been viewed as an impediment that gets in the way of monetizing the real estate. Our hope as long-term residents of the neighborhood is that the new owner of Wheatland Plaza will recognize the necessity of setting aside part of the land to facilitate a natural balance. We hope that the city will stand fast with their ordinance that requires twenty percent of the land to be green. It is also our hope that the new owner will abide by the current zoning restrictions that protect nearby residents from the intrusions of harsh abrasive lighting that disrupts nighttime activities, scaring away the owls that keep the rats at bay and shaking us awake if we have to take our dogs outside late at night. The time is now to merge economic development with ecological development to rejuvenate our urban environment. This can be accomplished by surrounding ourselves with a diverse assortment of edible, native, drought-resistant plants and trees. If we remove pavement where we can and exercise good stewardship over every available spot of soil, we can create water-absorbing, life-affirming buffer zones that provide comfort and peace of mind for people who are feeling increasingly disconnected from the natural world.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Tommy Reyna. Mr. Reyna, there you go.
Good evening, Senate Council. I am Tommy Reyna, five-two-three Catherine Court. I'm, uh, I guess the against to this one. With the caveat of that I'm, you know, excited, the idea that, uh, this, this area is getting a development. I, I've seen progress over the last couple of months, and, uh, I'm a forty-plus-year resident of this area. I do have my concerns, and some of the concerns I echo from the previous members that are here were just speaking moments ago to that fact. Uh, I personally am not really happy to the idea that they're considering shutting down Acton, stopping traffic to go from a main artery to the city. I, myself, as a resident in this area all my life, so I made, uh, I made the, the walk to Reed and, and as a student there. Cutting off access to that is just going to increase the, the walking distance required for children that are attending this area. I think, uh, careful consideration needs to be taken in that space. We heard moments ago about possibility of a bar. We heard possibility of maybe, uh, you know, possible hotel, a motel option there. Uh, we've heard, um, tattoo parlors. I, I think the, the city council needs to take this into serious consideration about what that says about our community and the people that live there. This is not just a District Three consideration. This is a, a city of Duncanville consideration. Uh, I think we haven't seen a, a major development of this nature come to Duncanville in quite some time, which is why a lot of the cities around us, uh, get to benefit from this. So I think we have to be smart about making those decisions and take into deep consideration about how this is going to impact not just the, uh, the neighboring community that's behind it, but how is this going to affect the traffic flow? How it's going to affect the children getting to their schools? And how this is going to affect this city as a whole? So in that respect, I, I love seeing progress. It's, it's important for me to understand, you know, to explain that to everybody that I'm happy to see something because I'm tired of seeing other cities get things. And I'd like to continue to shop in Duncanville, so I lean things to shop for. I have, uh, family members that I'd like to continue to, you know, inject tax money into the city. So give me a reason, but do it smartly. And I ask for that, for your consideration when you're thinking about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that hadn't had a chance to speak yet? Come on up, Mrs. Ebert.
Patricia Ebert, one-one-five South Greenstone Lane, Duncanville, seven five one one six. I too favor the development of four oh two Wheatland Plaza. It's long overdue. I do have a reservation. And I also want to thank the council and staff for working out two sticky items that I mentioned on November the fifteenth. And that was, uh, taking away the blanket-ish, uh, approval for a bar and the tasting room, taproom, slash microbrewery. And everything will be on a case-by-case, uh, approval. So I thank you all for that. My last, so y'all taking care of most of what my concerns were, but I still have a concern. I'm looking at the, if, this was in the November fifteenth document and also the December the sixth, and I just need clarification. For the December the sixth, it says on page two twenty-seven, buffering between right-of-way. And it says it requires a landscape buffer between a right-of-way and the site. There is currently no landscape buffer along Wheatland Road. And so this is where I need clarification. The proposal would be to create a variable width buffer along the property line and into the unutilized street right-of-way. In addition, it is proposed to add on-street parking in the underutilized travel lane closest to the curb. closest to the curb. The introduction of parking would provide a transition from heavy vehicular traffic to the slower-paced, more pedestrian-oriented, community plan Plaza along the front of the site. I read that as we're going to take away one lane of the street of Wheatland for parking, and that's right in front of a church and a school, and three lanes, I know it'll slow it down.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, would like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Don McBurnett made the motion, Ms. Cherry seconded it, so please vote. All right, so unanimous decision, closing it at 8:24. All right, Counsel, do we have any questions or comments? Mr. Coontz?
Thank you, Mayor Prothean. You know, so first of all, I want to say like I did last time, the onset, that I am in favor of this whole project and the idea of rehabilitating that property is something that, you know, I've been excited about since I first heard about it. And I also want to say, you know, there have been some statements about whether or not some things that we've been shown this time around were what we saw the first time. And I went back and looked at some of the presentations and the slideshows that were presented to the EDC and also at the town hall meeting, and they're pretty similar to what we're seeing now. So, you know, I do want to point that out, I did go back and look, and there are not a whole lot of changes. So what we're seeing now really is what we saw back when we approved the grant and kind of started this process. You know, that being said, so when it comes to, for example, the bar, is there, some of these proposed uses, they're just proposed uses, right? So, potential uses, right? So, we're not necessarily looking at there's somebody with plans for a bar or tattoo parlor outside the door, and they've already got tenants lined up. Is that the case?
The best way to describe it to you, sir, is it's a permitted use within the district. It's not saying that that's going to go there. It still has to go through the process of a CMO and anything else in the city that afford to go there. So, it's basically, these are the permitted uses within that district.
Okay. So we had, I did want to make sure that that's clarified, that what we're seeing here is just potential uses, right?
Yeah, I want to add to that, and I saw that, and one of the things the staff does is that in each type of designation, whether it's retail or urban, there may be a list of all the things that could possibly fall in that category, and so what the staff gave you were examples of things in that category. It is, basically, the developer has been listening to what you want and don't want. We're not going to go out recruiting things that we know the city is not interested in, but these are things that are permitted under that designation.
Thank you. So, and along those lines, so speaking of, you know, listening to what we don't, what we don't want, what we want and what we don't want, you know, I also have some reservations about some of the uses, proposed, potential uses. You know, one of my concerns is if the property were ever to change hands, and these uses are allowed, and so any potential owner of that property could do whatever they wanted. I like the vision of, you know, the current developer, but if, at some point, and so I'm saying that because we already mentioned the event center and adding another layer of stipulations there with another SUP, another layer of approval. I'm not in favor of a bar at all, and, you know, I believe that, we as a council have a responsibility of representing the values of the community, not trying to determine what those values are, and we're not here to influence or try to change what the community's values are. And so, I've heard quite a bit this evening, and this is in my district, that there are quite a few people who have concerns about strictly a bar. And so I do want to say that, but as far as the event center, there are some concerns about that, but if we've got another layer of approval there with an SUP, then I'd feel more comfortable with that. And then I'm also against a tattoo parlor. I don't know if these things are necessary for this to succeed, but again, I'm just kind of relaying what's been communicated to me to, you know, by people who live in the neighborhood.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tennant?
Yes, sir, I just want to clarify the bar concept, because there was a mention of the boutique hotel. I do apologize for my lack of explanation earlier. Bars are considered auxiliary use to hotels. So you can't just have a bar tavern X. This is more of an auxiliary use to the hotel, which is when we're using the term bar, you can't have a bar per se. You have to have the food, that food alcohol component, if you will, for it. So with that stated, this is more of an auxiliary use to the hotel that is also part of the plan as well.
Okay. And that would be clarified in the ordinance?
It's in there, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, because when I look at the retail service uses, I just see bar, 75% alcohol sales, so...
And SBD, auxiliary to the hotel, yes.
Okay.
Which is like our current, and just to go a little farther, if you don't mind, sir, that's like our current PD, I mean, our current downtown development as well.
And then, so, and I still have concerns about the green space, and I know that we did get an explanation for that that last time, and that explanation made sense. I guess, are there any other, you know, as far as the developer is concerned, any other options, you know, that we could do the green space? Because reducing it to 5%, I mean, that's almost nothing.
Understandable, sir. And that's one of the push and pulls that staff was arguing with, or debating with as well, because of course, there's the substitution, where if you put extra green space, you're also reducing parking. So we're trying to find that balance, sort of a happy median, and again, we're also looking from the standpoint as it stands now, where there is currently no green space there at all. As it was built back, when it was previously built, it was built as a whole concrete monster. So we're basically softening that, and the applicant has taken the diligence of actually softening it a lot more considerable than it currently is now.
So, yeah, just one other comment on that. As you saw from the slide presentation that Mr. Tennant mentioned, there was 2,500 square feet of existing green space currently. Once it's said and done, including the right-of-way space, there'll be 49,000 square feet of green space on the development. So it's a significant increase of green space, and a portion of that, I believe, 21,000 square feet, it's in your packet, is in some of our right-of-way that the developer will be maintaining for us. So that's the, if you look there on the, to your, I guess it'd be to your right, you can see their total and additional off-site landscape is 49,335 square feet, as opposed to 2,500, which exists now. And approximately 21,000 of that is in our right-of-way, which they will be maintaining, so that's of no cost to us.
Okay. I guess I misread the request for the exemptions and having it reduced to 5%. So, did I just misread that?
No, it is a reduction, a percentage, but because it is such a large area, the percentage, the percentage would be a large area of open space as well. But given that it's such a small area of green space that we have now, it is exponentially greater what the applicant is proposing relative to what of open space that we have currently.
And this isn't, I'm asking about this again, but, you know, this isn't a deal breaker for me, but if, you know, as we move forward, if we could continue to look at other options and just maybe look at other ways that we could maintain or increase the green space there. And the only other question I had was the exemption from the screening requirements for dumpsters and equipment, on-ground equipment. Is that still something that the developer's requesting?
Yes, I believe so. A lot of those dumpsters that are asking for the exemption would be behind Building A. There's a few shown, but I think the applicant may be able to answer that question better, but to my knowledge, that's where the unenclosed dumpsters, for the most part, are located.
So, yeah, let me, if I may, currently, the way the dumpsters are situated, you have them all across the back of the building. He wants to centralize the dumpsters, so there's one location where everyone's going to utilize, and that would alleviate some of the litter and the trash that you're finding within the landscaping behind the, or the green area of the right-of-way that you find behind the building that was currently mentioned a minute ago, so you'd be able to police it better and have less littering, hopefully. And so, basically, all of the tenants, as you know from the planned development, you're not going to have a back of building, everything's going to be entering in from the front, so it's to make it cleaner and have more people frequenting the back and the front, so you'd have less litter conceivably. Of course, the landlord or the developer would speak to that, but if you have people going in and out of the building, they're not going to allow litter to be in front or trash bins to be in front of their building, so they'd have to go to a common place to dump their trash. And of course, it's up to the landlord and the tenants to make sure that that trash and that, those dumpsters are, you know, picked up and maintained, et cetera. But you essentially would have people coming out of their building space and seeing if there was litter or not, so you would hopefully have more policing of it, or at least complaining if there's litter taking place, typically out of sight, out of mind, but since you would have a lot of traffic going in and out of that, you wouldn't have as much litter conceivably. So that's why you have the litter and dumpsters in one centralized location versus along the back of the, all along the back of the building.
And where's that centralized location on here? Okay, well, it's not centralized, so I'm looking over here somewhere. Is it off, is it behind Building A, off to the...
If you look at Building A, sir, right there where that little gash is, and this little portion of the lane, so there's a work, that's a housework? Oh, yes, perfect, yes. Right here, sir.
Okay, so that's not exactly centralized then, is it?
For the buildings, in between the buildings, yes, sir. Right there. Here, here, and here.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Contreras? To that point, those dumpsters behind Building A, from north to south, are, they're screened in the sense that there's a six-foot split-face block wall that was put in there as part of the requirement when that was built. So they're screened from public view, except for somebody that drives that alley, which not many people do. So that in and of itself takes care of itself from a screening standpoint. I know that I heard the developer talking about, and I can't remember the term, but a more natural-type screening around the dumpster locations that might be on the east side of the property. And therein lies a question that I have. It's two-part, about the screening in that area, wherever that central location is determined to be, but also to address the gentleman's statement that was made about the trees that were taken down, not by the developer, they were taken down years ago, that were being unkept along those South Alexander houses. And so there was a lot of natural screening. It wasn't pretty, but it did separate them from the backs of those buildings, plus we had a fabric screening requirement on a chain-link fence, which in itself is not very pretty, and it's hard to maintain. So, the screening idea with natural vegetation is interesting to me. I think it could be accomplished, but this may be a question for the developer later on. I see in Exhibit B, Exhibit Five, I'm sorry, ground cover types of elements for that area back there, but I don't see anything growing to, I don't see trees or anything that would grow to help facilitate some of the comeback of some of the birds, a place for birds. So, I'm not suggesting trees, but I thought I heard early on in our first presentation that there were some other types of native plants that were going to be grown back there to decorate it up a little bit more and give a little more above-ground screening, so that, looking out of those backyards that used to have the trees, at least they get something back that is halfway attractive to look at and would screen those dumpsters further up the hill, because the dumpsters are at the top. So, that's just my point, and maybe the developer can talk to that, what the plans might be over in that area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor Prothean. Gentlemen, we had a citizen that asked a question about buffering. Could you address that, please?
Bear with me for one moment, as I address my notes. So this was from the section buffering between the right-of-way, in which our code requires a landscape buffer between a right-of-way and the site. So, the applicant was, had mentioned that there is currently no landscape buffer along Wheatland Road, and that the proposal would be to create a variable width buffer along the property line and into the unutilized street right-of-way. In addition, it is proposed to add on-street parking in the underutilized travel lane closest to the curb. The introduction of parking would provide a transition from heavy vehicular traffic to the slower-paced, more pedestrian-oriented, community Plaza along the front of the site. So, the buffering that's mentioned, again, is to create a more pleasant pedestrian-looking feel, and I hope that addresses your question.
Okay. I think her question related towards Wheatland Road as well, and potentially being a reduced hour.
As part of this proposal, that would, that's not part of the PD proposal to reduce any right-of-way. This is a zoning mechanism, so that's not part of this request. Thank you.
So again, thank you for the question, Councilmember. So, the applicant has discussed the potential for a reduction of the highway or the street, Wheatland Road, and utilizing one of those lanes as a potential buffer or potential parking area. However, that has not been presented before this council, that would come at a later date. There has been a significant amount of study done on pedestrian traffic, on right-of-way, on traffic counts, on traffic accidents, and how it would activate the center. So there is a presentation, and there has been a significant amount of study done on the potential for that utilization as a temporary parking space, not a permanent. We have been in discussions with that, and that would come at a later date, but as Mr. Warren mentioned, that it's not presented before you today, but potentially that could be an additional buffer to the site. As you know, there's a lot of pedestrian and residential uses surrounding this facility or surrounding this development, and the idea would be to activate it so that you'd have people walk in and have a more pedestrian-friendly access from those neighborhoods. So a significant amount of study has been done, and research has been done, as mentioned previously by one of our citizens, and we are in the process of going through that. And that is part of the slowing down the traffic there on Wheatland Road and being able to write a buffer for this development, but that's not before you today, but that would be a separate presentation for your consideration.
Correct.
Also, I think what they were also speaking of, as we talked about it the last time, is that they're using part of their existing land to create the buffer. And so where we saw that parking on that top area, I believe you spoke on the fact that they were going to use their property for the first level of the buffer. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Contreras?
Is that, is the picture that we have up right now, is that with the reduction input? Is that the way this would look with the reduction already in effect?
So, let me just, with the cursor, try to denote a few things. This is the edge of the right-of-way at this dotted line, and then this is actually, this dashed line is the property line. So this is where the property line begins, and this area between the right-of-way and the property line... and the property line is out of the jurisdiction of the other request.
Okay, so that first line, that first line that you pointed to, um, what did you say that was, right there?
I believe that's the edge of the, the, the right-of-way, and it's, that's, maybe this line.
Yeah, it's that line.
Yes, sir.
That line out there is a water line.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, okay, so now you're, now you've got the, uh...
The correct...
The actual curve.
Right-of-way.
Yeah, it's the actual curve. Okay, so, in, in answer to the question that you were asked, um, the, um, this is not, this is not the picture of the landscaping with the request of reduction included in this.
No.
Okay. So, when we don't have a picture of what it's going to look like with the exclusion of the, uh, or what with, we don't have a picture that's showing us what it, what it would look like with the landscaping that's required under the current ordinance and that which is being requested?
Green is what's requested.
This is what's being requested.
This is what's being requested.
The green, yes, sir.
With the reduction. Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you. Now, I'll tell you, given what it looks like out there right now, um, with the little landscaping it does have, I don't, I don't have a problem with this, I'm just speaking for myself, and I understand the complexity and trying to fit in all of the required landscaping on a property that has parking issues and has to leave room for additional buildings that are going to be built as the project goes on, so I don't have a problem with that. Um, I just, I just wonder, I know in, in older ordinance, may still be on the books, when a developer couldn't fit all the trees on their property, those trees that couldn't fit on the property, there was a stipulation that you would donate that to a park or a school or something in the city. Um, I don't know if that's still in place, but I'd be interested to know if that's still in place, uh, so that we can, the trees we calculated to go in here, that we can put them somewhere else and put them to use. I think we've got adequate greenery in here right now, the way this is with the reduction, but I'm just, it's just an idea that if we still have it on the books where we can substitute trees we want to eliminate by donating them to, uh, different public properties around the city, that might be an idea where we still get the trees, they're just not on this location. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Mr. Coach?
Thank you. Uh, how many, uh, living units are in the, the, I know, I know the...
Approximately fifty units.
Approximately fifty units?
Yes, sir.
And what, what's the size on each unit?
Uh, the exact size of that particular's space is approximately, I'm looking at the math here, I believe it's Building D and...
Building E.
Building E and D, it's about sixty-five thousand square feet, if I'm not mistaken.
The housing units.
Just the housing, just the housing alone. So, as far as the parking, so would there be dedicated parking spaces just for the living, or would they be sharing with the shopping center and...
So, yeah...
Potential conflicts there?
So, there, there obviously would be a shared parking, uh, on the site, as you know, during business hours, there would be activity taking place, people that live there would be going to work, and they wouldn't be parked there. The requirements on the development require approximately three hundred and eighteen parking spaces, but being, uh, part of our ordinance, our CZO, is that under opportunity areas, you can reduce it by about twenty-five percent, which would put it at two hundred and thirty-eight required parking spaces, if we followed that same process, and so that would require about two hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces. There's currently two hundred and fifty-five on this project, so we are within that twenty-five percent reduction, but, yes, you're absolutely right, during busy hours, maybe even on weekends, you might have, you know, some issues, uh, to be perfectly honest and transparent, but during the work week, when people are gone, and after hours, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have any parking issues.
And of those two hundred and fifty spaces, how many of those are required for the, the living structure?
Oh, gosh, I don't, I don't have that specific number, maybe you would...
I guess, just based on how many, how many occupants that you might have...
Just to ballpark it, two spaces for every unit would be approximately a hundred spaces.
I, I, I would be interested to see, just, just seeing the details on that, I mean, I'm sure you all have a handle on it, but...
Do you have that?
Yeah, that, that's one of those things that could potentially be a real big problem, uh, in the future. And, and yeah, if the developer's here, and if he can answer that.
The answer to that is seventy-two, sir.
Seventy-two spaces?
Yes, sir.
For how many units?
Seventy-two spaces for twenty-two, forty.
He asked how many units?
Yes, I was counting them up real fast.
Residential units.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Uh, about fifty, roughly.
All right, uh, and then also, correct me if I'm wrong, because a question had been asked about the road that goes through there, and so, the idea is, you know, to turn that road off to the right and, uh, to cut off that entrance there. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's not even a city street, that's something that the owner of the property in the past has just allowed traffic through there, so technically, that, that's not even a street that we have control over.
That's correct, that's right.
Okay. I think that's it, oh, no, got one more.
Well, hold, hold that one, go ahead, Mr. Coach.
On that point, uh, I was going to ask that very same question, I had to step out, I'm sorry, uh, but the gentleman had, had mentioned, uh, the closing off of Acton, uh, as an access through the property. Um, has that been discussed to the extent that I didn't believe that we were closing off Acton?
Yeah, so, Acton can still go through, but as you know, uh, with any shopping center or any development, you want to slow traffic down, and you want to have people activating the site, you want them to actually drive through it and look at it and slow it down, so it's actually, as you're probably aware, there was a lot of people racing through that property, and so, people that are always walking and hanging out and enjoying the afternoon, you don't want a thoroughfare that's going to drive straight through and possibly create accidents, so you want to slow the traffic down a little bit, but still have access to Wheatland Road.
Still have access to the property.
That's correct.
Ultimately, to Wheatland Road. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I just want to add to that, that, uh, that was also part of the discussion with our police department, as we have been working on some traffic control, uh, areas in that area, it's been, we've had some issues with speeding there, uh, we're looking at what things we can do to also manage traffic in that area, uh, and that's one of the options in how we're working with the public safety department, though.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Coach, you got one more?
Yes, sir, I've got one more, thank you. Uh, so, with the, uh, requests for, you know, allowance of the sundry shops, retail shops, and I was looking at the, uh, the, the request, and somewhere, somewhere I think I saw that there's only one use allowed in that development, so if it's approved, I mean, so currently there's a Dollar Tree or, yeah, there's something already there, so based on this, there wouldn't be any allowance for any others.
That's accurate, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Contreras, you got one, lights on. All right, so if no one has any one, anything else, we'll take, uh, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Mayor Protim, I'd like to say that this project is something that's a good start. Yes, there might be some considerations that, that people are concerned about, but this is a project that's changing Duncanville, and it's a good project, and it, and it's doing this. I, I would say that this developer's also knows the interests, because he's, he's set behind here as well, and he understands what, what the citizens kind of want, and I think he's got that at people's heart as well, and so, I'm going to make the motion to approve.
Now, Mayor Protim, I'm going to, um, second that motion, but I, I also want to thank the developer for hearing some of our difficult questions and responding to some of those in a favorable way that I think will, um, not hurt the project's continuation, but it will, uh, definitely took into consideration things that the public have been asking about, so, um, I'd like to thank him for making some, um, amendses to some of the, uh, the suggestions that we had, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Mac Burnett, and second from, uh, Mr. Contreras, please vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. So, Senator Secretary, uh, item six on our agenda, we have no staff reports, staffer board reports, so we're going to move into council chambers for our executive session, which we did not perform prior to coming out.
Eight fifty-four.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I'll take a quick... Yeah. I'll take a quick... Um... Yeah. I'll take a quick... Um... Yeah. I'll take a quick... 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 Yeah.
...
Y'all are, y'all are now on.
Okay.
Cameras live.
Give it a couple of seconds because I think they listen. Right, they listen, they listen for sound before they put y'all on video, so the swag it shouldn't be putting y'all on. So while we're still in recess, we are still being observed.
Correct, so whatever you say, Kenham will be.
And there's Mr. Harvey. Live video stream pass. All right, okay, we have completed our executive sessions and we are reconvening our city council meeting for December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. The timestamp on that is ten fifty-seven. With that, I'll be moving to items number five on the agenda. Item number five C is taking a necessary action as a result of the executive session. I will first make some remarks concerning item number five A, which is consider resolution approving a hotel. Amen. Can we go back, go back?
Go back to executive session, Mayor.
Five C, but we're going back to executive session itself. There it is, okay, we are actually on item five C. So executive session one is close executive session, seeking counsel from the city attorney pursuant to the Texas City Government Code to address legal requirements of designation for a land for park purposes and the appropriate motion required for such designation legal consequences. For the record, for all of our citizens, know that we have come out of executive session on item number one and it is our intent and purpose to deliver an ordinance to the city of Duncanville regarding the property at six oh nine Danodale Road. To that effect, understand that there's a process that's involved in this. The process has to be defensible, that process has to be legal, that process has to be enforceable so that whatever ordinance is developed from this particular session has the necessary legal substantiation to withstand any kind of obstruction to it. This ordinance will stand. So to that respect, we are pursuing an ordinance. I want to be very clear about that to anyone that's listening in terms of how we're proceeding from this point forward. So with that, we have a motion and it's been prepared by our city attorney with counsel, consultation with the entire council. And so city attorney, would you please read that motion?
Yes, Mayor and council, as a result of the executive session, I have prepared the following motion for consideration by the council. Motion to authorize the city manager and staff to institute legal proceedings to consider amending the park master plan, the comprehensive land use plan, to undertake zoning text change amendments and zoning amendments necessary to designate six oh nine West Daniel Dale Road by ordinance as a nature preserve and that the staff shall propose a timeline for initiation and completion of that process at the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting.
Thank you, Cheryl entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved, we have a motion to approve by Mayor, Councilmember Harvey. We have a second by Councilmember Barrett Cruz. Since we are in here, we'll do this by voice vote. I'll go by district by number one by numerical order. Voice vote, Mr. Barrett Cruz, District number one.
Four.
District number two, Mr. MacPernette.
Four.
District number three, Mr. Coons.
Four.
District number four, Ms. Cherry.
Four.
District number five, Mr. Contreras.
Four.
Mayor, Mayor at large. Councilmember at large, Mr. Harvey.
Four.
And Mayor says four, we have unanimous approval of the motion, thank you very much.
Miss Wellman, I'll get you the written, uh, pro, motion tomorrow morning.
And on executive session, item number two, there's no, there's no action to be taken on that. That's the completion of our business for tonight. With that, we are adjourned, official timestamp is eleven oh two, thank you very much.